Are we there?
Yes, we are.
Okay, good. This is Doug Brown speaking, and I would like to call the meeting to order. I understand we have a full participation from the regions, but to confirm with each Regent in order, please say, announce themselves. This is Doug Brown. Kim Sanchez-Rial.
I'm present.
Okay, and Sandra Begay.
I'm present.
And Maren Lee.
Present.
And Rob Doty.
I'm present.
Melissa Henry. Unmute. And Rob Schwartz.
Present.
Okay, Melissa Henry is present. I will assume so. In any event, we have a quorum, and the first item on business is the approval of the agenda for this meeting. And do I have a motion to that effect?
No. Regent Brown, I'd like to move something off the consent docket. This is Maren.
Well, I think we can do that when we get to the consent.
Well, if we approve the agenda, doesn't the consent docket stay as the consent docket?
No, of any Regent can, I think, Rob Doty very helpfully pointed out that any Regent can move an item off of the consent agenda.
During the.
But we approve the consent agenda if we approve the agenda. So it's a change to the agenda.
Well, if you'd like, we can at this point formalize that items F, G, I, and J are to be removed from the consent agenda and discussed. However, that does not preclude other items that other regions might want to have brought forward at the time the consent agenda is discussed.
Well, and I want to remove A from the consent agenda, the constitutional amendment from AZAR.
Okay, all right, let's do that, too.
Thank you.
Do we have, all right, with those adjustments to the agenda, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, and I'll take the other, I'll take Maren's then as a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye by roll count. Rob? Yes. And Maren, yes, because you motioned it. Rob Schwartz?
Yes.
Melissa Henry? She maybe disappeared. Sandra Begay?
Yes.
Kim Sanchez-Rial?
Yes.
And Doug Brown, I vote yes. Okay, we now have the agenda approved. Let's go on to the minutes of the March 9 regular meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, a second from Sandra. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye by roll. We've got Kim and Sandra down. Rob Doty?
Aye.
Maren Lee?
Aye.
Rob Sanchez?
Schwartz. Aye.
And, and Rob Schwartz, sorry. Doug Brown says yes. Is Melissa Henry's, is she on or muted?
Regent Brown, Regent Henry is on, but her mic does not seem to be working.
Okay, well, we've got six out of seven, so we'll have her as an extension, I suppose. Okay, let's talk about the approval of the meeting schedule for the year 2021, which will be up on your screen. And I have to say as a preamble that clearly it's not going to be five months until we have another Board of Regents meeting, and in all likelihood, we'll have one or more special meetings when we know more about any budget revisions that will be upon us. Loretta, did you have further comments at this point about the meeting schedule?
Yes, and Regent Brown, did you want me to take a moment to talk about sort of the rules of the road for virtual meetings and the authority?
That would be helpful.
All right, well, this may likely be so a bit of a historic moment, the first all-virtual Board of Regents meeting at UNM. And we are able to do that under the authority of guidance that the Attorney General issued on March 17, when the stay-at-home orders and COVID-19 issues were coming to a head in New Mexico and around the world. So Attorney General Bala Zetas has agreed that per the Open Meetings Act, Boards of Governors like the UNM Board of Regents can hold virtual meetings, provided that the public is given access to attend. And there's a couple rules that this Board should follow, and those include that the Board members should identify themselves when they are speaking. And you have to remember that there are a number of attendees that may not have access to the video, and so it is helpful for them to know who is speaking. So I would say that all speakers should identify themselves. All votes need to be done by roll call vote. The institution needs to maintain a recording of this meeting, which we are doing. And the last couple pieces are that we have worked very diligently, and particularly Mallory Revere and the IT staff, to make this meeting as close as possible to our in-person meetings, including at a point in the agenda a little later, allowing live public comment. So I want to thank all of those folks for their hard work. And the last thing that I would say about a virtual meeting format, this is not from the AG, this is just etiquette, as we all learn to live virtually, is to please mute your phones any time that you are not speaking in order to reduce any background noises that may occur. Chairman Brown, did I cover what you needed in regard to virtual meetings, or are there any questions?
Yes. Let's ask if there's any questions. Questions from the Regents? Hearing none, let us put, hi, Melissa. Sorry for the grief.
Hi, Doug, can you hear me now?
We can hear you loud and clear.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, let us have a vote to approve the meeting schedule for 2021. Is there a motion to that effect?
Motion to approve.
Okay, from Sandra, and Melissa will take your comment as a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye by roll. Sandra and Melissa, we've got your role there. Rob Doty? Let's go on, Rob Schwartz.
Aye, sorry.
Rob Schwartz?
Aye.
Melissa Henry?
Aye.
Kim Sanchez-Rial?
Aye.
Maren Lee?
Aye.
All right, then the motion passes. Thank you very much. Let's move on now to Administrator's report by President Stokes. President Stokes?
Good morning, everyone from University House on our beautiful UNM campus. Yeah, things have changed a lot since we last were together. The whole world has changed for us. But frankly, it has been remarkable to see the hard work and the resilience of our faculty, staff, and students as we have moved forward to completely upend everything that we do. I'm very, I'm hoping to spend time then on this report, kind of sharing with you some of the things that we have been focused on quite a bit here, so I'll try not to move too fast. But, you know, I do have a lot of ground to cover, given the number of activities in the last couple of months. So the next slide, you know, we're going to focus here initially on what we've done to protect the pack during the COVID-19 pandemic. So on the next slide, you'll see that, and I'm hoping, it's kind of a challenge to read these from my perspective, I don't know how big your screen is, but I'll try to be descriptive of the things that are up there. You know, of course, it's been a stressful time, and it's interesting to look at this timeline and realize that on the 31st of January, we sent out a notification to, to the UNM community talking about COVID and what was going on in China. You know, at that time, there were six cases in the United States, and there was a belief that there really was no threat, very little threat to this country. Move ahead, you know, not very far later, on the 3rd of March, we had announcements about a coronavirus webpage, so we launched some information to our community. Then we, we are using the wrong terms here, because it created confusion when we said we were extending spring break. We made that announcement on the 13th of March, and really it was just an extended spring break for those who were actually taking on-campus classes and not for those online. You know, one of the first of many lessons in clarity of communication to a community. But, you know, always, always new lessons to learn. You know, on 17th of March, the limited operations were announced. And then on the 23rd of March, Governor Lujan Grisham issued the stay-at-home orders. We ended up making decisions to postpone commencement. You can see here that we went to a period of remote instruction that was initially to date in April, but then we really have continued to extend the transitions and extend our period of remote operations. On the 8th of April, we actually restricted access to the Albuquerque campus, asking that people, allowing our communities to walk through campus, ride their bikes, their, you know, their skateboards, and the many ways people traverse our campus, but really trying to protect our facilities and our grounds. Then we've extended the limited operations first to May 16, but now we've just announced that we will extend those limited operations until June 1. What else have we been doing? The next slide tells you the massive efforts, Mallory, thank you, the massive efforts to provide for patient care, to increase capacity at both UNMH and SRMC. The pediatric areas were converted to adult ICUs. A women's care clinic was converted for COVID-19 non-ICUs and, and a conference room, and many of you have been over and at the hospital and been in that conference room a lot, it was converted to our respiratory care center. A lot of changes. Been over to the hospital, you'll see numerous physical changes and controlled access. There were plans developed to increase ICU capacity. There was a separate post-recovery COVID-19 clinic. One of the challenges with, that I heard about sitting on the HSCI Incident Management Team, regular eight o'clock meetings, was just how lonely some people were in ICU. So creating opportunities for family visits via technology was a very positive thing that was provided. Also for the physicians themselves and nurses and other healthcare workers to have conversations. And then there was a specific COVID-19 bereavement program that was set up. There was a lot of statewide engagement, too, in the next slide. Very much involved with testing and collaboration across the three health systems. We had a robust reference laboratory that was formed just 20 years ago. It's the partnership between UNM hospitals and Presbyterian. And working with TRICARE has been of enormous benefit to the entire state of New Mexico and certainly to the UNM. Also really concerned about the impact of COVID-19 on the homeless. And so UNM has been involved with that. The city of Albuquerque formerly deputized Dr. Laura Potahom, who's the executive director of UNM's Office of Community Health, to serve as a medical director for that West Side shelter. So there've been, and then, of course, our Office of Medical Investigator has been serving in statewide operations with storage capacity and protocols for autopsies. So they've been very active. We have some other state-run initiatives that I'll focus on in the next slide. We've had a lot of leadership providing expertise across the state. The medical advisory team has facilitated statewide health system coordination. That was led by Mike Richards as part of that. Other leaders were Laura Banks and Christine Beido and Christoph Lambert. Rob Schwartz was part of it. Lot of work groups working on the issues for creating a healthcare network in the state of New Mexico. So that hub-and-spoke system that they created, that has been created at the state level, has been really good. The Navajo Nation Response Team, you know, has included Dr. Roth and Dr. Lathrup, dealing specifically with the issues in the Navajo Nation. And in the next slide, some repeat of this, but, you know, again, Dr. Roth has been serving for this National Rapid Response Team. Art Kaufman and Tassie Parker are leading a group to coordinate outreach to the native communities. Prevention Research Center has collaborations in rural communities. Lots of collaboration at Gallup, and we know how serious the issues are there. Of course, the collaboration to produce masks and shields, I think, for, for people in various communities. That was a partnership, really, that I'll talk more about on the next slide. But also the heroes, that system of having healthcare people in all the communities or the counties in the state, like, much like the ag model of extension, that Art Kaufman has been doing has really been helping in these underserved communities. And I wanted to mention specifically on the next slide, that special engineering, that engineering work that was done in concert with HSC, we had people across the, across the university that helped to produce these devices, this PPE for people. And there was a wonderful story, thank you, Chumis, who pointed it out to me, on the front page of today's Albuquerque Journal. You know, Christina Salas has done great work, and, and, and they took all this work out to Gallup and met with Patty Lundstrom, Representative Chairwoman Lundstrom, and, and others in the Gallup community. But Laura Schaefer is a flight nurse and was also instrumental in a lot of the work that they're doing. So if you read the Albuquerque Journal, and I hope you do, great front-page article, very, very positive story. Next, we've also been involved in a lot of national and international work. Project ECHO, of course, has always had a presence nationally and internationally, but they've created infectious disease office hours, critical care office hours. I mean, what they're doing is tremendous in serving an entire globe affected by COVID-19. We also, of course, continue doing tremendous research, and we have, last count, I had 43 COVID-19-related research projects. We have clinical trials related to some of the treatments for COVID. We're looking at genomic sequencing of the virus. We've got vaccine work going on. We have a P30 COVID-19 supplement grant, so lots of work. And in addition, we are participating in an observational health data sources and informatics with 10 countries. The goal here is to really figure out what are the safe and effective treatments. And what we know in terms of our future is that it is going to be about our ability to effectively treat this virus until we have a vaccine. And so this work, I view, is very, very crucial for, for us and for all of us in the future. We've also, in the next slide, you'll see we've been providing healthcare worker support. We provided temporary housing in our residence halls. We've developed collaborative campus efforts to decontaminate PPE for reuse, offered wellness programs. We actually ended up consolidating our UNM and UNMH occupational health offices so that we could provide expedited testing and contact tracing, because these are absolutely essential to our abilities to respond effectively to this, to this pandemic. I do want to say on behalf of the entire university, I want to extend a resounding and profound thank you to all of our healthcare workers. They've really amazingly stepped up. And so the community, as you'll see in the next slide, you'll see all sorts of pictures to see the extent to which people have stepped up. We had, we've had drive-by salutes by the Albuquerque Fire Department. We've had, I want to mention specifically, 17-year-old Sam Neal, who's the son of our very own real estate director, Tom Neal, battled cancer and was chosen by Make-A-Wish Foundation to make a wish, and his wish was to do something for healthcare workers. So I think that says a great deal about people in our communities. And people want to know what to do. One thing is you can send, get wild cards to COVID-19 patients. So on the next slide, we talk about the swift move we've had to make to remote instruction. 83% of courses were moved, 17% were already online. And that took place within a very short period of time. You can see the numbers on the slide. Then we have a tracking system to help monitor progress. So we'll use that forever. This has been really, really a good, a good system. On the next slide, you'll see that one of the things that happened was that our faculty senate took leadership here. It was remarkable. Other institutions, the leadership is coming from the administration, but what I was pleased about was our faculty led this, this approach to getting faculty to be flexible with students, to work on the credit, no-credit grading, and really to encourage faculty to help our students be successful and complete their coursework. We also did an assessment of student needs, which guided us in the things that we did for our students. We also knew how difficult this transition was going to be. The difficulty would be difficult for our faculty and our students. And so we created a special student-faculty facilitation network. I'm really grateful to leadership in the Provost's Office and Asada Zaraya, our Vice President for Equity and Inclusion, really recognized how important this would be. And they've been able to facilitate issues between faculty and students that are just made more difficult by our circumstances. And Rodney Bowe is serving as a facilitation coordinator. Given out a lot of laptops, a lot of mini scholarships. We have an early alert system for students, and we provided additional support for doctoral students by extending deadlines for them. Over in the health sciences in the next slide, they too have continued educational experiences with electronic curriculum delivery. The biggest issue, one of the huge issues, of course, in health sciences is the use of clinical venues, and so we've had to deal on main campuses and, of course, on the health sciences with the laboratory venues. But a lot of students have had to been, have been removed from those on both, on all parts of the UNM. We've organized volunteer opportunities. We've trained College of Pharmacy students to help staff and a poison control hotline with COVID-19 questions. For additional student support on the next slide, we distributed 8.6 million in the CARES Act in emergency support. Students were really grateful. We based it on an expected family contribution, and so had two different levels of support that you can see on the slide. And we've been distributing to our undocumented and DACA students who filed financial aid. We've distributed funding to them from other sources. Originally, they thought the CARES Act money could go to them. They later clarified that we couldn't, but we had already made the decision to be, to be safe with what they might be expecting and, and find our own resources to provide those funds. We're also planning for a free late summer one-credit course. What we know is that students really haven't been, they really haven't been necessarily, they're not going to be quite as ready for fall semester. That's true for our, for our students coming in. So we want to help students get ready to be back at school in the fall. And the School of Medicine, for the next slide, they created a COVID-19 block for medical students, and they've been doing a lot of different work in that area. Educational sessions for teachers, they created that, they created podcast segments so that people could get information they could easily understand. So great work from our, our medical students. In the next slide, you know, this would have never happened. We could have never done it if it hadn't been for incredible crew in information technologies. And I know there was a question at the beginning, can we really do this? Well, it turns out we can. So they have absolutely stepped up. They've been great partners across the university. They have 180 staff, 120 students. They support 24,000 computers on main and branch campuses. Before COVID, we had Zoom users and meetings, about 2,000 users, about 2,600 meetings. Since COVID, or during COVID, we have 11,270 users and 44,000 meetings a month. So our lives have changed, haven't they? Thank you to a great UNM team in IT. So, yeah, couldn't have done this without them. Our branches remain busy. They each sent us a little bit of an update of what they were doing, which you can see on the slide. Of course, Gallup has rescheduled their graduation. In fact, everybody's really doing something else for, for their commencement ceremonies. And they each really work to intervene and allow their students to be successful. So you can see some, some things that they've done, like, you know, hosting virtual open houses, allowing opportunities for students to get information they need, to establish an online one-credit temporary nurse aid course, finish that, go immediately into the workforce, meeting a serious need in the community. We have also been providing faculty and staff support in the next slide. You'll see that listed. Tiered staff, we created tiers one, two, and three. We wanted to help bend this curve, and we've been successful in doing so. Issued Zoom pro licenses, provided support for teaching and research, developed a childcare, a surge childcare clinic, or alternatives for our tier-one employees. Childcare has turned out to be one of the major issues for people. And the tier-one employees are the ones who are having to be on campus or in place. And so we needed to be able to help them, and were able to place more than 400 children. And a lot of, a lot of staff were involved in that, really pleased with their great work in organizing it. Also, in terms of ongoing faculty support, issues with tenure, we made the decision to automatically extend the tenure clock for faculty. They can, of course, choose not to use it, but it'll be automatically extended, because what we know is that this has completely upended the work of our faculty on the tenure track as they attempt to reach the final stages of actually earning tenure. So we're doing several things to help our faculty be successful down the road with their promotion tenure. Of course, this year's went as scheduled. We do have some additional things that our faculty are concerned about. You know, our newer faculty that have startup funds, you know, some of them are told they had to spend them within a period of time. So we're working with our faculty. We've recognized that, you know, many of them are working at home, and that has created a lot of extra duties. People are now doing lots of work. We've seen some, some research that shows that this has been an especially challenging time for many women faculty. And then, of course, people are missing their research travel. So these are things that we'll be dealing with. In terms of thinking about the fall, contingency planning is what we're doing. You know, if you talk across the country, and I've spent time speaking with presidents across the country and many of the national organizations, I know other leaders, James has been talking to provosts across the country, you know, and there are lots of different plans going on. There is a Chronicle survey of people of different institutions, and I believe it was looking for the figures here, 73% are currently planning to offer in-person classes. But even those that are planning that are preparing for something else. Many of them are waiting till July to actually say exactly what they're going to do, because our reality is that we all want to offer classes. But we recognize that there will be changing circumstances in the weeks to come. We are going to learn things that will influence our decision-making. We, of course, plan to align with state government and with the city. We'll be guided by the principles of protecting the health of everyone in our community. Also, though, to fulfill our deep-rooted mission to educate and to do research and create and serve people, and to protect the university's future, which, you know, we'll be navigating this for months to come. Of course, the state has a three-phase plan. We think higher education's going to come into this a little bit later. And all of this is predicated on a full surveillance system of testing and contact tracing. And right now, we don't believe that, right now, we know we don't have a testing system that is, that's large enough for us to really implement across the board. In the next slide, you'll see that there has been an HED draft reopening plans that was created by Kathy, Dr. Kathy Winograd, in response to our request from the governor. And what she did is she spoke to all the presidents and chancellors across the state, created a plan for reopening higher education. Of course, we've been open, we are doing higher education. We're really talking about return. We're really talking about return to campus. And you see a timeline here on the slide with our current situation is we're still in the COVID-19 emergency, but starting to talk about emerging. But as you know, we've already moved our timeline a little later. And the governor had, staff did request a little later movement into phase one for higher education. So we continue to work closely with, with the health people and the governor's office to make sure that our timelines align in ways that serve our community and, and the state in general. So lots of issues facing higher education. I mean, it's really very difficult to, to, to plan. So we have to plan for lots of different contingencies. And so our planning for fall and next spring, we're kind of assuming that we might be able to have in large enough spaces, environments that have no more than 50 people, but those numbers could be different. We're going to develop multiple approaches to social distancing. We're talking about one-way, one-way hallways. I mean, there are all sorts of changes to the physical environment, all sorts of changes to behavior that we will have to institute and then train everyone on, you know, in terms of cleaning up spaces and wearing masks. And so we will be, in the summer, we plan to use some of the CARES Act money that we expect to get to provide summer training on remote instruction. Because what we want going into the fall is for all of our faculty to be fully prepared to offer an exceptional online educational environment in case that's what we have to do for some part of fall semester or, and/or spring semester. So a lot going on, we're exploring whether we should require laptops for students. So now the next slide, you know, there's a lot of interest in all the modeling that's going on. Everyone has read a lot about the epidemiological modeling. And so we're probably all learning a great deal about these mathematical models. Some are based on forecasting, some are based on projecting. They actually lead to vast differences in, in, in those projections. So the New Mexico Department of Health has been relying significantly on the Los Alamos Labs National, their forecasting. So I thought I'd highlight a little bit of their work. The bars to the left of May 10th are actual daily reported new cases and the lines were the Lannell projections. So what you can see is the, the projected line that they provided on, on April 12th. And then down below, you see the line, and you can see it's definitely going down, the projections for May 6th. If you go to the next slide, what you'll see on the next slide is these are all the projections based on all of, all of the reports. And so you see that these models have been changing. There's a little bit of an uptick really on May 6th, but you can see that the models keep having us going down and down and down. Each measurement period since April 12th, it, it represents that we would be below 50 new cases a day by the end of June. There's still a lot of work to do. And, and, and what we know is all the work associated with what happens is one lifts restrictions. And so, you know, this is, you know, the, the little uptick on May 6th. That's part of why there's been so much effort to tell people they started moving around too soon. And, you know, I think, I think for us, that's, that, you know, remains one of our most serious concerns. And yet we know the cost of, of, of not opening up. And so we know that we're dealing with a really serious, serious decisions that are being made. And I think going to the next slide, you know, all of this is what's created so much stress for people. And we've been very much aware of what this has meant for our community, for our students, our staff and faculty, for those around us. So we've tried to be sure that everyone's aware of the, of the resources that we have available. The Agora Crisis Center, of course, is the oldest campus-based crisis center in the U.S. And they've continued to field calls on their helpline and offer emotional support via online chat. Of course, our Shack is still in operation remotely. If you go by there, you see there are ways to get in with appropriate social distancing. We have our, our cars, which serves our, our staff and faculty. And we're just doing everything possible to support the mental health of, of our, of our entire community. On the next slide, you know, additional resources. We've realized just how, how much impact there's been on the community. So I'm really pleased with our Division of Equity and Inclusion created a series on climate for COVID-19. And you see here some, some, some of the things in the series, the impact on students, faculty and staff. There have been specific issues around our Asian and Pacific Islanders because of some of the political tensions around, around the virus. And, and then the upcoming one on parenting in a pandemic. I suspect that will be well-received because I know it's been a challenge. So speaking of challenges, there are serious fiscal implications of COVID-19. And on the next slide, you will see that this is a visualization of the most recent state revenue forecast. I think this was based on May 5th information. And it really just tells us what we already knew. That little teal dotted line, you know, that was the December 2019 consensus forecast for the state. The, the top kind of light salmon, orange, whatever we call that. That is a, based on a U-shaped recovery scenario that was worked out by this consensus revenue estimating group. That includes the Legislative Finance Committee, the Taxation Revenue Department and, and other entities, including our own UNM Bureau of Business and Economic Research that provides, is a contributor to the data. The U-shaped, so we've got the U-shaped recovery scenario, we've got the L-shaped recovery scenario. And then, of course, the gold bars themselves reflect recurring, really recurring revenues and appropriations. So what you can see is that certainly for FY '21, the expectation for revenues, depending upon which model we rely on, is vastly lower than the actual, than, than what was appropriated and expected to be appropriated for FY '21, which is why we're sure there'll be a special session. We're expecting a special session and a lot of really difficult work in the, in the weeks and months to come. The, the L-shaped recovery does actually show a deeper and a more prolonged issue with, with our economic contraction. But that is more like the one New Mexico experienced in, in the last major recession. And of course, this could all be, this will all be affected by a lot of different outcomes. A lot of different factors are going to influence where we land. We don't know what's going to happen with the virus. What are the strategies going to be for opening up the economies? How long will it take for consumers to be comfortable and therefore spending? How, how much of the temporary layoffs end up being permanent? What happens to oil prices? There's just a tremendous amount of uncertainty and that uncertainty will continue in the months to come. We are working with CUP, we meet weekly with, with the Legislative Finance Committee rep, with the governor's rep, with DFA to, to really talk about where things seem to be going. The recurring revenue in FY '21 could drop 1.8 to 2.4 billion. And recurring revenue in FY '22 stands to be 17% to 28% below the FY '21 operating budget. So, you know, this just tells us what we realize. Tough times ahead, lots of decisions that we'll have to make for higher education and here at UNM. What's the impact to UNM at this point? On the next slide, for those of you at FNF, you saw a table version of this. This is what is called a waterfall chart. Thank you to my chief of staff for sharing all sorts of ways that I can depict information. Some people probably liked the chart they got at FNF, but this basically waterfall chart says from left to right, what you see is a running net impact of each added or subtracted amount of money for our resources. I wanted to note that the very top line is actually the zero mark. So, you know, what you're seeing is really how much money has been lost and added for various types of issues. So that first one is related to the loss of revenue because of returning housing refunds and food service refunds to our students. The second part is the loss related to event cancellation and other types of services. Then the next is related to other types of travel, things we couldn't get reimbursed for, all, all sorts of things. You know, the net, the main branch net impact is negative 9.6 million. On the HSC side, you know, much bigger numbers, as you can expect. The academic net was, losses about 17.4 million. It's our hospital that has really seen that decline, also seen some, some monies have been given to us to help us in this time. But all that does is kind of close what was really an $80 million gap to something closer to 50 million. And, you know, I think, you know, we will likely see some recovery as the hospital is able to start doing more elective procedures. But, you know, it, we don't know how quickly that will occur. So the total is the last column there, the total impact to UNM is a negative 49.8 million. And this is a real challenge for us, quite honestly, because when we are in conversations with, with Legislative Finance Committee and others, there's a sense that we're getting all this money from the federal government. So we can afford perhaps to, to be cut. But our reality is that the impact on us is going, is very, very significant. And that impact is likely to continue. So helping us give the word that, you know, institutions of higher education, UNM in particular, has seen huge financial hits from this COVID epidemic, pandemic. So on the next slide, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to go through this a little quicker. And, and if you want more information on this, I'll, I'd be happy to send it to you and talk with you. But just know that there have been a lot of congressional interventions. There have been a lot of focus by the federal government on various packages. And it's pretty impressive that three major packages were actually passed at the federal level to provide aid of different sorts throughout the country. Phase four is probably going to be a little more of a challenge. I'm not really clear that higher education will see much benefit from phase four. And, and it does look like things are going to be a little more politically fraught as they are discussing it. On the next slide is just a visual of where the funding really has gone. And what you can see here is that much of it from the federal government has really gone to individuals and to large corporations with smaller amounts, going to the small businesses and state and local governments and public health. You see here that about 14 billion went to higher education. And so, and, and I think we are sharing with you some of what has ended up coming to, to UNM. So in the next, the next slide, the current status as of last week. We did receive the 8.6, we gave it directly to students, as I've already said. We're still waiting for the other 8.6 million from, from the CARES Act. And we also have 1.3 million pending for being a minority-serving institution and then a Hispanic-serving institution. And then UNMH received some, some relief, emergency relief. You know, lots of things going on and a lot of things still not supported through federal funding. Our research programs, we're still trying to really work hard with our congressional delegation to, to get additional help for, for our programs and our operations needs. And, and then, of course, we've got the issues about, you know, being, having been slow to respond to what's happening on our tribal lands, which has a huge impact in New Mexico and at UNM, given our large number of, of students, faculty and staff who are part of that native population. I'm really grateful to our congressional delegation. They've really worked hard for us. And our government relations people have been, you know, fantastic, trying to really stay on top of this. So things still go on. In spite of all of this work, all of this work, new work for the institution, we have been able to, you know, get some leader, new leaders hired and they'll be starting soon. On the next slide, you'll see we've, our provost has been very busy. On the next slide, with the hiring of three new deans. Looks like Texas Tech is not going to like us very much because a couple of them came from there. Wonder what's going on there. But anyway, I'm really delighted that we've got Hansel Burley, Mitzi Montoya and Robert Gonzalez coming to, coming and all starting on July 1st. On the next slide, you'll see that ongoing executive searches do, the ongoing search for the dean of college of fine arts and then the executive VP for Health Sciences, Provost Holloway, great job, thank you. And all the members of these search committees, because they've been finishing up this work under, I guess you have to say, trying conditions might be the way to put it. So next, you know, I want to continue to celebrate success because we've been getting good news and doing lots of great things. Celebrating the class of 2020. And the next slide, you already know that we checked with our students. They wanted us to do an on-campus commencement, they wanted us to do it in August. They really didn't want a virtual celebration. But looking ahead and reading the tea leaves, it was clear that we couldn't promise an in-person commencement for, for August. So we are launching a virtual celebration. They will, members of the class will be able to participate on May 30th at 9:00 a.m. And, and then they'll have a future live. We don't know when it'll be, you know, because we're not going to do it until it's really safe to do it. I've been, individual colleges and units have been doing all sorts of variations on celebrations of graduations. So I've been really delighted with the ingenuity of our folks, how, just how, how they've adapted to, to technology and found ways to try to celebrate. None of it replaces what our students wanted, which was in-person, family and friends. You know, truly walking across the stage, you know, picking up a stole, a diploma cover. So we're, we're looking forward to time again when we can do that celebration. Certainly, the class of 2020 will go down in, in, in UNM's history, there's no question about that. So next, I think, the next slide, we did have a video, but it turns out we can't do video. We couldn't get it to work, just could not. So we're skipping the lovely video you were supposed to see. And we go directly to something that was incredible news for us, which is that Carlton Caves, one of our emeritus research professors, was admitted to the National Academy of Sciences. There is really no higher honor for someone in the sciences to be entered at the National Academy. Whole universities weigh their excellence by how many National Academy members they actually have. It's one of the indicators of, of greatness for a university. So very proud of Professor Caves and his work and, and the recognition and glory he really brings to UNM with his great achievements. The next slide, we celebrated the great work of our UNM inventors. We were supposed to do it in person, but the celebration turned out to be online. And I just want to say congratulations to the 57 inventors who had issued U.S. patents. That's remarkable. We are excellent in this area, we really do well as a university. On the next slide, another really prestigious fellowship, the Guggenheim in the Arts and Humanities. They're really, this is one of the highest honors to achieve. And so I was really pleased when Dr. Jose Luis Ricardo, an associate professor of music, was recognized. His, there are, you know, 3,000 applications, only 175 fellowships in the country. So really, really impressive that he was recognized. In the next slide, you'll see that our athletics group, I can't tell you how proud I am of what they have been doing to engage in public service. They have been on the front lines, working with Albertsons to get funding. They've, I'm getting ahead of myself. They worked with, on a food drive with Albertsons to raise money for our Lobo Food Pantry. They, the Lobo Club has donated money from local restaurants and provided meals to healthcare workers. And then Lobo Rewind, on April 18th, we broadcast a replay. And then Lobo Rewind, on April 18th, we broadcast a replay of the 2007 New Mexico Bowl. It was broadcast on Facebook and Twitter. It was our first bowl win in 46 years, so I think people had been, I bet you they're really excited in 2007. I wish I'd been here in 2007. We beat Nevada, Rocky was the coach at the time, and Danny was an assistant, so they did live commentary throughout it. I think at its height, they had 500 people on live, but they've had more than 15,000 people view this on Facebook, and so I think that's a pretty impressive impact and ways to stay engaged during, you know, this pandemic. Next slide, we've been doing a lot of communication town halls, we had, the next, yeah, I kind of missed something here. We had a virtual town hall that had about 2,400 people attended. Dr. Roth has been doing a lot of chancellor chats, and then we do have a really important town hall, that virtual town hall is going to be taking place today. The Division for Equity and Inclusion is hosting the Addressing Anti-Blackness at UNM. That's from 4:30 to 6:00 today. You know, this is in response to the really horrific racial messages, anti-black messages that were sent to one of our faculty members and two people in our libraries, who are talking horrific, horrific stuff, and so, you know, it's time for us to really listen to our community, and this is an opportunity for us to listen and learn and figure out, you know, where do we go from here, you know, and how do we really step in and improve this situation? Because we know what happened with those messages, it's not the first time, you know, we want it to be the last, so how do we get there? What do we have to do as a community to make that happen? The next slide is about enrollment. We're already going to do an enrollment presentation, so I'm really just here focusing on the fact that, you know, all across the country, students are asking questions, they're unsure about their futures, they're making decisions about whether to come back, whether to even start college, and so this particular slide, I thought I would just mention to you, is an indication of who it is the students might be listening to as they think about their futures. These are poll results of 1,171 high school seniors that were taken between April 21 and April 24th, and it looks like they put their greatest trust in public health experts and organizations. That's great news, that that's who high school students are listening to, but I tell you what really warmed my heart, their second greatest trust is in college or university administration. Now, I don't know what to tell you, but that, that's, I just had to share that with you. So I'm not going to read the rest of these, you know, because this is a national survey, so, but I just wanted you to know, students are paying attention in the right places, it looks like, so that gives us some hope. On the next slide, I'm just mentioning that we are moving ahead with summer and fall course registration, we're doing all this online. Summer of courses online for the first session and for the through session, still looking at what might happen for the second session. Students are registering, and we'll continue to monitor conditions as we go forward, as we get toward fall semester. And the next slide, I just wanted to let you know that I received the task force, the Task Force on Institutional Ethics and Integrity that we put together last year, they have provided me with their report, so in the near future, I'm reading that report now, I'll be sharing it with the community, I'm really excited to see the work that they've done and the recommendations that they are making. In the next slide, you'll see that we're also engaged in really supporting university integrity by doing a risk assessment, so our audit department, the health system, we're all working together to conduct this university-wide risk assessment. So it will, this will allow us to identify what risks exist within our business units so that we can mitigate those. I think this will go, this is part of really trying to rebuild trust in what we do at UNM, so I'm really grateful for the launch of this particular assessment. And the next, you know, we continue to try to help our students with their careers, we're part of the STEM Boomerang Program, many of you are familiar with that, and we partnered, STEM Boomerang partnered with New Space New Mexico to host a space and beyond virtual career fair on April 30th, and it connected a lot of STEM students to professionals with over a dozen companies and organizations, and this has become more and more critical now with this COVID pandemic, though the employment opportunities are uncertain for students in so many areas, and so we're trying to help our students in these uncertain times with thinking about where their, what their life looks like when they graduate. And then finally, I want to say thank you to outgoing advisors, I think this is possibly the last meeting for folks, so Adam and Mohammed and Ryan and Alexis and Bev, thank you for your work and being advisors to our board, advisors to the leadership of this university. You're all pretty incredible, and it's been a pleasure, pleasure working with you. And with that, I will stand for questions, or sit for questions.
Are there questions from the Regents? President Stokes, I just have, excuse me, go ahead, Rob.
Yeah, sorry, thank you. This was extremely helpful, and thank you so much for this report, and thank you so much for your service at this remarkable time. I can't quite imagine what it would be like to be a university president right now and over the last couple of months. It certainly is something I think nothing could prepare you for, and we are very fortunate to have you exercising the leadership that you have at this moment, and we are really appreciative for that, not just your leadership, but Provost Holloway and the rest of the team has been truly remarkable on both sides of LOMAS, across the campus, and we're, say, very thankful for everything that you have done. I'm, I've been a little concerned by what I've been reading about campuses generally across the country opening up so quickly, and it's, of course, been a debate that we've seen discussed at great length in the Chronicle of Higher Education, but also in the New York Times and other sort of the more generally read publications, a lot of discussion about when colleges can open up, colleges and universities will start returning to on-campus activities as well as online activities. Obviously, we're open in the meantime, too, but we're open in a different kind of way, and I was, I'd say, especially a little, especially concerned by reading the reopening campuses document from the Higher Education Department in New Mexico, which, at least based on what I've seen from the data in New Mexico, is, I think it's fair to call it wildly optimistic about where we're going to be on the public health side when that moment comes, when the fall semester begins, and I say appreciate hearing you talk about the dependence on scientific data, the students' dependence on scientific data, but also our dependence on scientific data when we decide how to handle this. In the end, my question is, whose call is it? Is it the, does the Higher Education Department get to make the call on what happens on campus in the fall, or is that the governor's call, or is that the individual campuses' call? Is it our university that gets to make that call? Do you have a sense of how that's going to work out when the fall comes? Because there certainly is a lot of pressure on the universities to have on-campus activities, and as you point out, there may be scientific reasons not to have those as well.
So, you know, I think that, you know, we've actually had that conversation with Stephanie Rodriguez from the governor's office during the COP, one of the COP meetings, and I think there's a clear understanding from the governor that higher education in New Mexico is run by the boards, and so what we've been asked, and we all agree, that we abide by what our governors, governor is saying we need to do, and so I think everyone is on board, and you see throughout my slides where this is mentioned, that we will rely on those state guidelines and Albuquerque guidelines for what is best for us to do. So although we have some autonomy as higher education institutions accredited, because we have governing boards and we're not supposed to be controlled by state government, basically, but I do think, you know, it will be the call of individual institutions in making decisions about what things will look like, summer, fall, and in next academic year.
Thank you, thank you. Other questions of President Stokes, Regents?
Not a question, but just a comment, I echo what Regent Schwartz said, hats off to you, President Stokes, and the entire leadership team on campus. This has been quite an incredible time, and we're very proud of your leadership and the team's leadership, so thank you.
Thank you. I do have to say, I feel so grateful for the team that I have, really, really exceptional people, working very hard, and so we would not be so successful if I didn't have this bright team around me, so thank you.
Thank you. Well, I just have to chip into Doug Brown here, that President Stokes, you know, running a university isn't easy in peacetime situations, and this is so far from that, and the way you've kept things going, and I think the positive messages that you sent with all the proper due cautions, and the team that you've put together has performed so admirably, and I really have to credit to Chancellor Roth and his team, and also statewide leadership with Chancellor Roth at the Navajo Nation and Mike Richards helping statewide in the hospital reactions, and Richard Larson's leadership at TRICOR and the way they've stepped up on testing, and ever so many, and Finney Coleman, you're working with the faculty so constructively, and Ryan, we're going to miss you guys. That's really, really appreciated, and of course, the students, students are having to put up with, you know, some severe disappointments in the kind of college life that they had anticipated, and, you know, Adam and Afzal, your leadership in keeping their spirits up and listening and passing on reactions is extremely helpful, just thanks all for coping with the situation, and we all just pray we can return to a more normal as soon as prudent to do so. And we also, not just to student health, but of course, faculty and staff is a grave concern at every step of the way, so thank you for that. Any other questions or comments from Regents?
Sure, Doug, this is Sandra. I just wanted to add that, you know, President Stokes and the leadership were giving us quite often good information of what was happening as it was taking place, so right from the very beginning, the communication between the team and leadership to the Board of Regents so that we know what was happening, and also we've heard the concerns of faculty, staff, and the students as things changed, but it really was, like President Stokes said, a team effort, that everybody cooperated, and I just wanted to also add my appreciation for everybody working so hard to address the unknown, and as things change daily, people have been able to keep up and try to just move forward, so I appreciate the positive nature that the leadership team has taken to make sure the students, faculty, and staff are safe, and I just wanted to add my thank you.
Thank you. Good, well, thank you, hearing no further comments, if we may, I will go to the public comments. Now, we had a protocol where the public comments had to come in by noon yesterday, noon Monday, to be eligible to be heard. Well, we bent that a little bit, there were a couple of latecomers within an hour or so, and given that this is an initial run-through on this thing, we admitted all those comments to be heard. There was one public written comment, did not want to necessarily give a live comment, but it was from Justin Garcia, who's a senior reporter for the Daily Lobo, and his question is, will the Regents reduce tuition and fees in the fall if UNM continues with online instructions? Why or why not? And as the custom, we don't respond right here, right now, to these comments and get into debate, but rather, I think during the provost's comments and vice president for enrollment comments, we can get into, we'll maybe touch upon that matter. As far as live comments, we'll see if this works, we're trying to patch in five live comments. The first one would be from Mr. Bruce Weatherby from the Candle Publishing Group.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Good morning to all of the Regents and to President Stokes. First of all, I want to also thank the healthcare workers that are affiliated with the university for the hard work that they do and the dangerous work they do, taking care of folks in New Mexico. I also want to thank Dr. Stokes, because the reason I'm calling is actually about a report that I wrote, the journal has written about, and the journal has editorialized regarding the situation with the contract and a release of claims by Steve McKernan, a contract he has with the university hospital, for which he basically does no work and receives $150,000 a year. I've communicated to the Board of Regents through your, the channels that you have. Dr. Stokes is the only one who's really provided a response of any significance. Chancellor Roth has just avoided any questions, CEO Becker has avoided questions regarding this. I don't expect that you are going to provide answers today, I understand what the chair just said about not responding to questions, so what I did want to let you know is, we're preparing our final investigative report, which will come out in the next two weeks about this. I assume the Board of Regents is aware that the documents relative to the release of claims has gone missing, the signed document. I've done, I've waited patiently for three months for a response and got, well, we know it's been signed, but we can't find it. That's really unacceptable, and I think the Board of Regents, in their oversight responsibilities, needs to tighten up on that. If we can't get a response within the next 10 days before we issue our final report, we're going to provide the information that we have received from, obviously, the efforts we've requested and received responsible, and other sources that we have received information of to the appropriate authorities that do investigations of a more serious nature than what a newspaper can do. So hopefully, somebody can get back to us. With that, I do want to thank the people who work very hard there, I know how hard it is, it's kind of unfortunate that a person who the hospital and the university celebrated as a CEO there for many, many years was deemed apparently not capable of doing the job that he was hired to do, and even though he has said he wanted to do it, they are deciding to pay him for more than two and a half years to do nothing, especially when there are also people, some of those healthcare workers are receiving barely living wage or less than living wage while they are on the front lines, so that's basically my comment, hopefully you get back.
Thank you, Mr. Weatherby. The next comment is from Professor of the Law Librarianship, Ernesto Longa. Mr. Longa?
Good morning, and thank you for this opportunity to make a public comment. In October of 2019, UNM faculty registered their dissolution with university policies, shared governance bodies, and the terms and conditions of their employment by voting overwhelmingly in favor of unionization. A week after the union election, President Stokes reported to the faculty senate that she was, quote, "optimistic about what we may be able to do together in crafting a collective bargaining agreement that serves UNM and its faculty." Then on January 15th, 2020, Provost Holloway stated, quote, "My hope is that we will be able to quickly and collaboratively establish the first collective bargaining agreement between UNM and UAUNM before this summer." Unfortunately, after five months of negotiations, it is clear that the administration's private actions are diametrically opposed. it is clear that the administration's private actions are diametrically opposed to their public statements. Five months ago, the administration presented UA UNM with an initial contract proposal so regressive that, if signed, would have resulted in a worsening of our members' terms and conditions of employment. Five months into negotiations, we are still waiting for a proposal or counterproposal from the administration that is neither boilerplate, superficial, or condescending. Five months into negotiations, we have yet to reach a tentative agreement on a single contract article. Case in point, the administration responded to our recent proposal on academic freedom by stating that the subject of academic freedom did not need to be addressed in our collective bargaining agreement. In fact, the subject of academic freedom is a subject addressed in every faculty collective bargaining agreement we have looked at. Five months into negotiations, UA UNM remains committed to negotiating in good faith for a fair collective bargaining agreement. UA UNM encourages the administration to roll up their sleeves, do their share of work in negotiations, and sincerely collaborate with us as equal partners in the drafting of a collective bargaining agreement that will improve our university. Thank you for this time.
Thank you, Professor Longa. Next, we have Matthias Fontenla, if I'm saying that right?
Correct. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. This is Matthias Fontenla, Social Professor of Economics, Main Campus. I commend everybody in our Lobo community for their hard work and doing their best in these extremely challenging times. I was watching President Stokes just now showing us very sobering numbers, mentioning the uncertainty, and that we're all waiting for the legislature to revisit budgets, and asking us all to show innovation and commitments to our mission. We expect some very hard decisions will have to be made that will affect the entire UNM community. In this light, I just wanted to remind you that UNM faculty overwhelmingly voted to have a faculty union to give us a voice in situations like this after years of being ignored. And thus, in order to save you some time before you can talk to us, I have some suggestions. One example, is really athletics part of the best education we can provide? Is that part of our core mission? Seems that our core mission is to educate, to develop minds. But rather than develop minds, football seems to be destroying the brains of our students. And may I remind you, at a loss of millions of dollars, that it could instead maybe provide better healthcare and support to our struggling students. Don't get me wrong, I love football, but very tough decisions will have to be made, and we need to be innovative. We also love soccer, and New Mexicans are proving it, and their wonderful support of New Mexico United. But you cut soccer, so you can do the same with football. Also, one more example, you're paying lots of money to outside counsel to stall us in the bargaining table, where their only objective seems to be maximizing billable hours. Maybe you should do what is best for UNM and its faculty and start bargaining in good faith. And here's a question for you. Healthcare premiums for faculty and staff are scheduled to go up by 4.9% on July 1st for all faculty and staff at UNM. I thought this was a mandatory substantial bargaining, that you just can't increase our healthcare premiums without sitting down to talk to us? Here's the thought: Provide affordable healthcare to all of our students, staff, and faculty instead of spending millions of dollars to destroy the brains of our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Professor. Next, Billy Brown.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. I'm William Brown, PhD in mathematics, part-time temporary, that is, part-time temporary instructor in mathematics and statistics for the nearly 15 years. I bring you greetings from the trenches of online instruction. My 31 statistic students yesterday took their online exam, and I'm spending most of today and tomorrow going through their exams, making sure they're getting appropriate credit for the work that they did. I am a strong supporter of my faculty union, United Academics at UNM. I have two concerns I want to express today. Well, first, I want to just wish everyone good health and safety to all of you personally and to all of your loved ones. We are bunkered down in our home and staying healthy. My two concerns are, up to this moment, adjuncts and part-time instructors at UNM are virtually completely excluded from all faculty governance bodies at UNM, including the Faculty Senate, most department meetings, and we are not allowed to vote. We are not part of the voting faculty. I urge the university administration to bargain with the union, to provide a voice in the governance of the University of New Mexico to those of us like myself who have been working very hard for many years but at reduced pay and reduced opportunity to participate. The second thing I want to mention is, I know the financial conditions are difficult at this time, but I certainly hope that that will not be used to deny what seems to me obvious, that adjunct and part-time instructors in the branch campuses, members of the Bargaining Unit 2, have been, you know, have been denied living wages and have had essentially no raises, most of them, for nearly 10 years. I certainly hope that in the budgetary considerations going forward, that at least we'll be able to bring those individuals, my colleagues, slaving away in the branch campuses at less than living wages, to bring them up significantly in their pay. Personally, I'm willing to sacrifice my own raise, if there are any, to help them get bootstrapped. And I hope that some of the administrators might be willing to kick in some of their pay to help those people. Thank you very much.
Fine. Thank you, Billy. And thank you for all the things you do to support UNM. The final commenter we have is Jessamyn Lovell.
Hello, I'm Jessamyn Lovell. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. I am a lecturer, contingent faculty in the College of Fine Arts, lecturer, senior lecturer, and undergraduate director in the Art Department. I have worked at UNM proudly for 10 years now in various capacities, including being adjunct several times, visiting professor, as well as lecturer of different stages. And I wanted to echo my colleagues in our union, our faculty union, UA UNM. As an activist in the union, in our union, I wanted to echo what they were all saying, especially what Billy Brown was speaking to around the adjunct, the disparity in pay that they experience in treatment, especially as budgets are cut. We're relying more and more, departments are forced to rely on adjunct and grad labor. And I see educators as essential workers, and as that continues to be prioritized in our future, if we continue to prioritize educators, then we are going to need to pay them a living wage, pay them better, and provide them with healthcare. They deserve to be well and safe. I also actually, in light of the recent hate crimes that have been, the ongoing hate crimes over the last couple of weeks, I was waiting for President Stokes to mention that, and she did when she mentioned the town hall. It's kind of buried in there. To me, as a strong advocate of Black Lives Matter movement and of my colleagues and community members who are black, I think it's really important that this be front and center for students, for faculty, who are being threatened. As I said, they've been ongoing. The most recent threats have come earlier this week. And I think that those details need to be publicly available, and I understand there's an ongoing investigation. And in light of the violence and hatred against Black people in our country right now, most recently, very public and discussed on social media, Maude Arbery, one of many Black men shot randomly, found and tortured, and then displayed on video. So, I really am in fear of my colleagues who are Black, who are being threatened. And as someone who has the privilege of being white and doesn't have to experience this, I think it's important that we all, as colleagues, come together to help support these folks and give them the information. I actually have some colleagues who were in Africana Studies working recently that didn't know, they didn't even know that their lives had been threatened, that their colleagues' lives had been threatened. This is a life-or-death situation. I understand the president is very focused on COVID-19. I am very grateful for her leadership in that, and this is also a crisis. And sadly, these are multiple crises overlapping over time. So, I would urge the president to take stronger action in communicating with our public, at least the UNM community, on what steps are being taken in this investigation to find the folks who are making these threats. I understand the FBI is involved. What are these reports that are coming? I will be participating in the town hall tonight. I hope my colleagues listening to this will also participate. I think it's a really important life-or-death situation. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Lovell. At this point, I wish to thank the IT staff, Dwayne and Dean and the group. I think this public comment period went on very well logistically, and I hope it was audible to all. But I thank you for arranging that. That went much smoother than I would have anticipated. Thank you. At this point, we want to move to the approval of the Main Campus, HSC, and Branch Campuses 2021 budgets.
There's comments from the Regents, and I have a comment.
Oh, wait a minute. Okay, there are comments. Excuse me. We had earlier comments, but yes, by all means.
And this, I know everybody has read the Daily Lobo report about the seal, and I know it's not on our agenda today. I would just like to caution the Board of Regents. This seal has been something that since 2016, we've had many people come before us and talk to us about their concerns over the seal. And my concern is twofold. As I said, in 2016, I brought up the fact that we needed to have more input from the constituencies at UNM, and that the process needs to be very inclusive. As you all know, the seal is mostly visible on our diplomas. So, they're the property of the university, but also the property of the students that proudly display them after they have earned them. And the seal generally is used during our pomp and circumstance. It's not our commercial mark. It's not what we sell our license plates or our bumper stickers or our T-shirts. The seal really is something that is very specific to commencement and our official, every official document that is around academia. And that being said, I was a little concerned that the process was, during ASAR, it seemed, and I wasn't there, and I've had certain people contact me, and they were very upset about it, that the Regents interceded and overrode the process that had been working since 2016. So, I know that that's something that's going to come up later. I just would like to say that we honor the process. We listen to the input of the people who will have these on their diplomas and who have taken on this task. And that's my only comment. Thank you.
Regent Sanchez Real or Henry as Chair of ASAR, do you wish to make any comment at this point?
Not at this point. I'm looking forward to the revised seal, coming back to ASAR, and then bringing it to the full board. So, thanks for your comments, Maren.
Good. All right. Thank you. Are there other Regents' comments at this point?
Doug, I would like to make a comment.
Yes.
Do you hear me? Okay. I also wanted to thank some of the outgoing advisors, but specifically, I wanted to take a moment to thank our student and advisors. They're, I think, I don't know about Mohammed, but I know that Adam is graduating. He's our ASUNM president, and I'm just really proud of some of the work the both of them have done. I know that this is probably one of the most difficult years, being a student leader at UNM, with everything that's been going on. I think that they've done an excellent job. So, I just wanted to comment and say that they're going to be missed, and I thank them for all the service that they've contributed to the university and how they've been a part of the board for the last year. So, thank you so much, Mohammed and Adam.
Thank you. Are there other Regents' comments? Yes.
Sure. Doug, this is Sandra. Real briefly, add my thanks to those who have been mentioned. I did also want to give a thank you to Alexis, who has led the UNM Alumni Association. I enjoyed reading about the Clean Paws Initiative of getting hand sanitizers out to different parts of New Mexico, not just Albuquerque, and wonderful donation of homemade or local-made hand sanitizer. And then the others, to all those who put out public PSAs, public service announcements, about how to wash your hands, how important that is, and how to keep yourself healthy. So, there was various parts of UNM through media relations and athletics, and also HSC. Very good public service announcements. I wanted to thank you personally.
Thank you. Other Regents? Hearing none. Let us move to the approval of the budgets as I described. And Teresa Constantinitas, are you going to take this forward?
I will take this forward. This is Teresa Constantinitas, Senior Vice President for Finance and Administration. And I am here today, President Brown, President Stokes, and all the members of the Board of Regents, to present to you for your approval the fiscal year 202021 operating and capital plans for the University of New Mexico. Joining me today in making this presentation are Chancellor Paul Roth from the HSC, Executive Officer for Finance Administration Ava Lovell, also from HSC, and the Director for University Budget Operations Norma Allen. The budget that we are presenting to you today is based upon the New Mexico State budget that was approved by the governor in March, and includes the budget assumptions for tuition and compensation that were approved by the Board of Regents also in March. The only change from those assumptions reflected in this is a lowering of student fees. When the Board of Regents approved the budget, we anticipate, back in March, we anticipated an increase in mandatory student fees from $20 per student to $25 per student. The election took place after the March Board of Regents meeting, and that increase was not approved by the students. And therefore, that increase is not reflected in this budget. Now, with the significant impact of COVID-19 and the unexpected drop in oil prices, we expect a special session, as the president mentioned, of the New Mexico Legislature to convene as early as June 2020. And that special session, we expect to have significant negative implications on the budget that we are presenting to you today. We have been working with the CUP, the Council of University Presidents, on scenarios, numerous scenarios, that include state budget cuts of up to 15% or about $53 million for UNM. So, as a result, our financial planning teams have been working on ways to absorb these cuts and mitigate the impacts to our academic, healthcare, and research missions of the university. So, we fully acknowledge that the budget request we are submitting to you today for your approval is likely not going to be the budget we will finalize for fiscal year 2020, given the economic circumstances we have described. Particularly with regard to employee compensation, it would not be fiscally prudent to allocate any increase in compensation that is greater than the funding that the state ultimately provides for such purposes. However, we must submit our budget request in accordance with House Bill 2 for March, as currently written, unless and until the legislature modifies the legislation. So, with this request, we're asking you to allow the UNM administration to make any necessary changes to this fiscal year 2021 budget based on the outcome of the future special session. In turn, we plan to return to you as soon as it's practicable for approval of a revised fiscal year 21 budget augmentation request, or called the BAR. So, what we expect to happen is, we will submit this budget, there will be changes, and then the state will ask us to submit a new budget adjustment request, which will expire through gentle approval. So, now, I'll provide summary information about the Main Campus and Branch Campus budgets. And then Chancellor Roth and Senior Executive Officer Lovell will provide information about the HSC budget. There's far more detail in the fiscal year 2021 operating and capital budget that you receive. So, starting with this slide. So starting with this slide, the total consolidated 2021 budget for the University of New Mexico is $3.32 billion, which is an increase in the scenario of 4.9% from fiscal year 20. The largest increase is in the UNM Health Sciences Center, increasing 5.9%, followed by the main campus at 2.4%. The branch campuses will show the increase at 1.7%. And the next slide, when looking at the total revenues for the main campus, note that a quarter of our budget comes from state appropriation, and then 20% each comes from tuition and fees and our sponsored activity, almost 18%. It's the funds we generate by our auxiliary services, such as housing, dining, parking, and other non-student instruction. And for the 2021 year, we plan to use fund balances to pay for 12.4% of our activities. The next slide shows that in looking at how we spend our money, our largest two expenditures are instruction and capital, making up well over half of our operations. Student aid and research comes in next, and finally, public service and auxiliary activities. In Slide 7, as I mentioned earlier, the budget includes an increase in state appropriation, a tuition approved in March, less that $5 ASUNM increase, and then the planned 4% compensation increase. Slide 8 shows that on our branch campuses, so this is Gallup, Los Alamos, Taos, and Valencia all combined, they're funded 42% from the state and 19% from grants and contracts, 17% from local governments in the blue there, and 13% in yellow from tuition and fees. Slide 9 shows the expenditures for the branches, and the bulk of their expenditures are, as you would expect, instruction in general with 13% public service. Now, we have seen a slight decrease in research activity at the branch campuses, and I say slight. This year, the budget is, and then you can go to the next slide, the budget is 1.7 million or 3.3%, and last year, the total was 1.97 million and 3.8%. So it's a pretty small change. So with that overview, I'm now going to turn it over to Paul Roth and Ava Lovell to talk about the HSC budget.
Okay, well, thank you. Just a couple of general comments, and then I'll turn it over to Ava. Just to reiterate, these numbers were generated around May the first, and subsequent to May the first, there's been a lot of changes that affect the Health Sciences Center. So the budget that you're about to approve, the numbers, I can definitively say are wrong. They're not going to be the same numbers that eventually we will be operating under. I do want to say that we're very, very grateful to the CMS and the state of New Mexico for both the stimulus funds and this significant, albeit temporary, increase in Medicaid funding that will significantly help our hospitals. Because of these new revenues and some very aggressive expense management on the part of our CEOs in the health system, I would suspect that our health system numbers are going to be significantly better than what you'll be seeing in this presentation. And we've been able to do that without any kinds of furloughs or layoffs, as has been the case in many other hospitals in the state of New Mexico. And I would just like to mention that the smaller hospitals, the rural hospitals in New Mexico are in a huge crisis, and whatever relief these additional funds will give them could prevent them from closing their doors. So it's very important for the entire health system in the state of New Mexico. But on the academic side of the Health Sciences Center, we will be affected by any state cuts in appropriations. We are dependent on the state for about 14% of our operating budget, and so any reductions there will have an impact on our clinical faculty as well as our educational and research faculty. And so with those overarching comments, I'd like to turn it over to Ava.
Thank you. And I do appreciate the ability to present to the Regents and the president today. So let's just go right ahead to the next slide. So this is the overall entire Health Science Center. So at the Health Science Center, we do include our two healthcare component units, and that is the SRMC and the UNM Medical Group. Because we are such an integrated Health Science Center that we really can't exclude any of our units. So the overall budget for the Health Science Center, entire Health Science Center, is $2.4 billion, which is a 7.1% increase over the original budget for 2020. So starting on this slide then, and looking at, starting at 12 o'clock, you can see that all the mill levy, we get mill levy at both UNM Hospital and SRMC is about $117 million. Going clockwise then, around to all of our state revenues, which would include all the RPSPs and the cigarette tax and the tobacco settlement, are all at $117 million. Tuition and fees for us at $30 million is just 1%. Our contracts and grants are right at $156 million. Again, we have a lot, some other revenue and transfers and so forth. As we keep going around, you'll see that commercial insurance is about 18%, and this combines all of the hospitals and the physician billings, Medicare at about 14%. You can see that Medicaid really is quite large at 24%. And that other patient care revenue is things like self-pay and IHS, and also includes the patient care revenue that we do transfer and pay back and forth between the hospital mainly and the School of Medicine. Next slide. The next slide here shows our expenditure budget for also FY21 at $2.4 billion. And this slide really is just to show you the size of our particular unit. So starting at 12 o'clock at the top, School of Medicine, almost is a little more than 25% of the total Health Science Center. Nursing at $16 million, pharmacy $23 million, population health $6 million. Our, all of our administration for research and general administration, including all of our utilities, groundskeeping, everything is $90 million or 3.82%. See that UNM Hospital, our largest unit, at $1.2 billion is 53%. Sandoval Regional Medical Center, $94 million in their expenditures, and UNM Medical Group at $274 million. Next slide. On this slide, we'll just start looking at a comparative analysis for just the academic enterprise. Again, all the schools, colleges, administration, and research. The original 2020 budget was one, had a net margin of $1.5 million. We revised that budget for 2020 to give us a $3.2 million bottom line. And our 2021 budget at only $324,000. And really, that reflects the amount of unfunded increase for the 4% raise, compensation raise across the Health Science Center, which really does focus on our School of Medicine faculty and the amount of, very small amount of state money that goes into that raise. The revenue for the academic side does show the 2.6% base tuition increase for all programs and has the House Bill 2, 9.7% increase in state funding in that, although, as we've discussed before, we feel like that may go away in a special session. And indeed, the 4% will likely go away as well. Next slide. So for the academic enterprise, just breaking down so that you can see the net margin of each of the units at the Health Science Center. The School of Medicine and College of Nursing have budgeted a zero net margin for next year, again, kind of really trying to cover all of the salary increases that we budgeted. College of Pharmacy will use a little bit of their balance, as well as the College of Population Health. Those use of balances are for non-recurring items, and they do have the reserves to cover that. Research and general administration will generate a little more revenue than expense and have a million-dollar net margin. Overall, the total academic Health Science Center net margin at $324,000. Next slide. We'll go to UNM Hospital. Again, this is just a comparative analysis showing the original 2020 budget was, had a margin of $4.4 million. The revised 2020 budget has a net margin of $26 million, but we need to realize that $33 million of that is state funding that came in for the hospital tower and for the Center for Movement Disorder. Without that capital funding, they have revised their budget to a loss of $7 million. Again, they put some losses in there because of the COVID-19 and they're stopping a lot of the scheduled surgeries that happened in the middle of March. They have budgeted for 2020 a net margin of $30 million. As we move on, we'll see how that changes. Things have gone up and down since we did this budget, and we're, as Dr. Roth said, we are looking, hopefully, at being in the black for '21, in the budget we end up with. Next slide. This is UNM Medical Group, which is our faculty practice and the faculty billing arm of the Health Science Center. So the comparative analysis, again, showing you the FY20 original budget of $4.9 million net margin and the revised net margin of $8.2 million negative. And really, this is not mostly COVID-related. This has to do with a large amount of actual revenue that we booked at the end of 2019. And so we had $15 million net margin, actual net margin for the end of 2019. We are now spending that in '20. So it's really a timing issue and does not represent a recurring loss. The Medical Group has budgeted back up to their $7.9 million positive for FY21. Next slide. Sandoval Regional Medical Center, our small community hospital, their comparative analysis showing that for the original budget of FY20, they had a $28,000 net margin, really break-even. They are a break-even operation. Being as small as they are, every change makes a big difference to them. Their revised budget is essentially unchanged for 2020, and for FY21, again, they budgeted basically a break-even. Next slide. So this just rolls up the health system, the three units of the health system, showing a $38.3 million net margin in that far right column for the budget for '21. Next slide. Just adding the academic enterprise into the health system for a total Health Science Center 2021 budget of about $2.4 billion and a net margin of $38,620,000. And with that, I will stand for questions.
Are there questions?
Yeah. Are these on both, for the full budget report?
Or what?
On both sides of the Health Science Center and the rest of the university?
Is there motion to be for approval?
I have some questions, and I was just wondering.
You can ask away.
Okay, great, thanks. And my concern with the budget report was.
This is Regent Schwartz.
Sorry, this is Rob Schwartz speaking. Let me just, I'm sorry, I didn't identify myself. And let me just point out that this, I mean, this is obviously a helpful budget report, but it is pretty far from what the actual budget is going to look like. And as you pointed out, I mean, it's helpful in some ways, but it may be really misleading in other ways. We're going to have a new budget. It's going to be a very different budget. It's going to go into effect very soon. I mean, really, the budget goes into effect in six weeks, the new budget, this budget that we're talking about now. And I'm sure that you've been thinking about what the real budget is going to look like, not just what this placeholder budget is going to look like. And I'm sure that the BLT and others and the Health Sciences Center have been working on what that actual budget will be like. And we know something about what's going to happen. We know that the state budget has gone from very good, when the budget was actually passed, to very bad today. Certainly, the outlook has gone from very good to very bad in revenue terms. Can you give us a hint, some ideas about where we're going on this budget? I mean, what's, how are the cuts going to be made? Because we're assuming that there are going to be substantial cuts to this budget for the next year. And for example, on the general academic side or the Health Sciences academic side, either one, is the idea to, are you thinking about across-the-board cuts? Are you thinking about just salary-based cuts for faculty and staff? Or are you thinking about cutting particular departments and targeted cuts at particular programs? I mean, we really don't have very much time to make those decisions, or we won't, when we have to come up with our new budget. We're going to have very little time to make those decisions, and it would probably be helpful for us to know now where we're going and where the university thinks that it'll be going when it has to institute these cuts. If there's more information on that.
If I may direct that to Senior Vice President Constantinitas, and I think she indicated that this is a budget that was required to be in by May 15th, based on the allocations made by the legislature in their last session, and that we indeed are looking at budget scenarios. But Teresa, would you like to talk a touch about, more about the process you intend to follow once we know the true parameters from the state?
Yes, thank you so much, Regent Brown. So Regent Schwartz, I'm, thank you for a great question, and it is what we've been working on as an institution in an environment of great uncertainty, because we do not know the extent to which the changes might happen. We're looking at reductions that include the elimination of the compensation increase, additional reductions of up to 15%, or we're working with CUP on those scenarios. And just as a reminder, the process by which we implemented the budget reductions that we built into the base budget, so as a reminder, we had to implement cuts of about 3.6% to 3.7%. We did not do across-the-board reductions for that. And our expectation is that with the additional reductions that may be coming, we will continue the same process, gathering input from the budget leadership team and looking at where there are resources. We have already begun cost-saving measures at UNM. So as you may have heard, we have a hiring freeze or hiring pause in place. We have actually put a pause on certain HR activities that would have additional costs for the campus, and we are about to announce additional cost-constraining efforts on the campus in the next couple of days. HSC went ahead and sent out messages related to travel costs and what I refer to as entertainment, but as food costs for meetings, those types of things. So we're moving forward on the ways to reduce resources and sending a call out to all of our people on the campus to be as conservative as possible with spending money. So we know this is coming. We don't know how big it is. Just, you know, the increase on the compensation, that's a $9.5 million piece right there for the main campus alone, doesn't include HSC. There's a lot of parts that we're looking at.
Excuse me, I was going to ask Chancellor Roth to comment also if there's further elaboration.
No, I think Teresa identified the main approach for the Health Sciences Center. Our revenue streams are very, very different, as everyone knows from the rest of the university. And as I commented, I think. And as I commented, I think, I am hoping that we will be in a stable fiscal situation for our health system. As Ava reviewed, the, the state funding, though, if there were a fifteen percent cut in state funding, that would be about a thirteen and a half million dollar reduction, we would, we would continue our current measures of freezing positions, which we believe will make up a large portion of that and, and very likely use some reserves to carry us through the balance of the year.
Thank you. Regent Schwartz, do you have a follow-on question?
Yeah, I do. Thank you very much. And I really appreciate the, the comments and the answers and I realize that there are uncertainties that it's really hard to overcome. And I can see on the health sciences side that the, at least dramatic, if temporary, Medicaid increase and, and the benefit of the CARES Act may in fact substantially ameliorate the loss there, but it's going to be much harder to absorb, it seems, in the rest of the campus. And so I think my, my question is for, and I think my question may have been answered by Vice President Konstantinidis, but you're suggesting that really what we're doing is trying to figure out places we can save money, basically the hiring pause, the travel limitations, food limitations, sort of minor things. And then what we have left, the really big hit seems to be compensation of faculty and staff. That's where our, we have some, some more leeway where you're suggesting the, the cuts necessarily are going to fall. And I mean, I guess I just wanted to focus in on that and see if that's right. And then to ask what you're, I mean, I realize you can't know exactly how big the cuts are going to be, but we have a sense of what the, the state budget looks like. Now, or we're beginning to get a sense of what the state budget looks like. When you said elimination of compensation increase, do you mean there's a reasonable chance that all that, that four percent would be eliminated and that there'd be an additional cut beyond that? Or, I mean, I didn't quite understand what, what you were saying. You talked about the elimination of compensation and an additional decrease of fifteen percent.
That is actually, yeah, sorry, I interrupted. Yes, that is exactly right. We are looking at a range, the, the compensation could be increase of four percent that's built into that March budget, could be cut in half, it could be completely eliminated. We're looking at all of that. In addition, we are looking at additional reductions in our base allocation up, you know, so we looked at one percent, five percent, ten percent, fifteen percent. So we're looking at different scenarios to get an understanding of what that might be in addition. So what we're also thinking about is when you saw the chart that the president gave, as we move forward, things could be a lot harder in fiscal year 21, 22 than they could be in fiscal year 2021 because for 2021 at least, there is one-time reserves, both at the state and at the campus level. And we, as you saw in the budget, we are planning, just in the base budget, to spend down our reserves, we'll have to do even more in order to make it through. So there, the, the range of reduction could be quite large and harder two years out.
And we're not going to be able to handle those through just a hiring freeze?
Oh, no. The hiring freeze, the pause on things like travel, those types of things are short-term small items. We'll have to do something bigger and more significant, depending on the scope of what we expect the amounts will be. So it's getting started now, letting people have a sense of how big this reduction might be for UNM. I think it's what we're trying to do without announcing a number when we don't know what that number might be.
Yeah, I, I think, I think I would prefer not to do a lot of speculation at this point until we see guidance from the state. It simply could be alarming and in fact, scenarios might not be quite as dire as the worst case we look at. Other questions by other regions or comments?
Yes, Chair Brown, this is Maren Lee.
Yes.
And I know these are placeholders and they're required under law and statute, but you know, I think that during this time, we have to look at every aspect of our business operations on campus and we need to streamline, we need to deal with these financial challenges. I mean, with that being said, I mean, we did a hard job three years ago with cutting sports at UNM and making that Title IX adjustment. And I think, I know the budget leadership team will do this and I think we need to look at all aspects of our campus. I mean, from institutes that have faculty in foreign countries to every programming we have that we, at this point, are going to have to start those discussions about making those hard calls. So thank you, that's all I have to say.
Well, excellent comment. And Regent Lee, I think it's really important not to follow some absolutely across-the-board treatment, but rather look at programs as well as expense categories.
And Regent Brown, I agree. I mean, we, you know, everybody has their sacred cows and we were, we've been, we were criticized today for cutting soccer. These, these are hard decisions. They're not easy decisions. And I think that, that BLT across the campus, both sides of LOMAS, we need to start looking at programming. I recall when I first became a regent, UNM was proud that they were all things for all people and I just don't know if that is something that we can maintain in this financial crisis.
Thank you, Regent Lee. Other regent comments?
Yes, Regent Brown, I had a question here and it's pretty basic going to just where we are in this process. And my question is, is if we all agree that this proposed budget is not anything near to what it is, why are we proceeding today with it? I mean, have we asked HED if we can have an extension on even providing a budget due to the, you know, that we know that a special legislative session's coming up? I guess that's my question is, is why are we approving this budget today when we know that it's not a real budget?
Good question. Comments from Teresa? Have we made requests, put it off or what?
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you, Regent Odie. We requested to put it off and the instruction was to go ahead and send it with the understanding that it is unlikely to reflect what the actual budget will ultimately be. We were given an extra two weeks, so this is by statute required on May first and it was extended to May fifteenth, but the understanding is that we need to turn it in because that's what the statute says. And then what we've been told is that we will receive a request for what we call the bar, a budget adjustment request to this budget based upon what happens in a June special session.
Okay, and the request for us to go ahead and turn this budget in now is coming from whom?
From the Higher Education Department.
Okay. And, and the Higher Education Department, have they told us, go ahead and proceed with the budget that we've already been working on? Or have they said to give us a budget that's realistic?
They want this budget that they know or they suspect will not be realistic and they expect us to be working on another budget once we get the changed instructions from the state in mid-June. Or we expect it to be in mid-June.
Okay.
Other regions, questions or comments? Thanks, thank you. Okay, well, at this point now, the, the motion to approve this budget for submission, is this to incorporate the budget adjustment request, the bar as well, or do you want to make that a separate motion?
So what we would like to do is to request approval of this fiscal year 2021 budget with giving permission to the UNM administration to make any necessary changes to it based on the outcomes of the future legislative session and that we will then bring that in the form of a budget adjustment request to the regions for approval again.
Okay. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved, this is Sandra.
Okay.
Melissa Henry seconds.
Further comments or questions?
Yes.
Hearing none? Oh, excuse me, Rob, Rob?
This is Rob Schwartz. I, I just have a question. It's unclear to me to what extent we are approving a budget, not knowing what the budget is. Am I correct that any, that the final budget, any final budget will come back before the regions and will be approved in the, by the regions in the future? We're authorizing the current situation to do the, to basically, to deal with the bar and produce a bar, but the, the bar is merely temporary in a recommendation until we have a chance to actually approve it.
Yes.
Well, hold on a second. We're approving this budget that we will turn in and we're letting the regions know that we are going to come back to you with changes and produce something called a bar that we will then turn in as a secondary budget down the line.
But the, but we're going to have to approve the bar before you turn it in, is that right?
Yes, we don't, we don't submit bars without getting the regions' approval first. And in fact, you're going to see in a couple minutes, the bar for last year that we need to get the regions' approval for.
Right, thank you.
All right, thank you all. Hearing no further.
One minute.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sure. So what the state is asking for, they gave us an extension, is they need a baseline. It's unrealistic or whatever it may be at this point, they need a baseline. The next process and the step, and steps we have to go through is allow the legislature to have their special session that has impact on us. We can only do that after the session when we have more facts. So putting in something now with the unknowns is really unrealistic. At least you have a baseline that we will have to modify, that we know we have to modify.
Correct. Okay.
Question.
Yes, Kim?
Teresa, what is the expected timeline for us to review that bar? Because I know, you know, traditionally bars are done, as we're about to do the one for this year, right? Kind of late, it's a little cleanup process as opposed to this is going to be a bar that is really the actual budget process. So how do you, what's the timeline that you expect for us to see that?
We are expecting, once we get the indications from the special session, typically what happens is we're given two to four weeks, and I'm really hoping for the four weeks, to produce the revised bar. Then we will also have to do another bar in this time next year. But what we're talking about right now is a bar for 2021 that will happen presumably two to four weeks after the special session ends.
Thank you.
Regent, President Brown, I have one more question.
Sure.
So this budget here, is this also, are we approving the tuition issues or we are approving tuition?
The tuition was approved in March and that tuition that is approved in March is showing up in this budget.
Okay. So then when we get more clarification, I mean, are we gonna, is there, you know, because the question that was asked earlier, if we're, you know, only offering online classes and such, are we going to be able to go back in and look at what the tuition is going to be for next year or is this locking tuition for the entire 2021 fiscal year?
This is, this is Doug, I'll take that. I think there is, we have the authority to make changes. However, in many respects, online courses cost more to deliver than in person. So that's, other comments from administration on this?
Sure, I'm, I'm glad to jump in on this. I think, you know, we of course haven't made any decisions one way or the other about what tuition might be in the longer run, but it doesn't, it's not really something that we're looking at changing now. Our costs for delivering education haven't gone down with the move to more remote classes. We're delivering excellent educational experiences online and through distance technologies. The, the primary cost of those is in fact personnel and we're not doing things like increasing the number of students in a section because that would harm the, the educational experience that those remote courses provide. And so we think it's probably going to be better to focus on the quality of our educational experiences and not grow the size of those online sections to ones where, you know, you can try and use scale to drive those costs down, but you really have challenges around quality. And remember, what our students are already telling us is they want high interaction, they need high interaction. That's the learning experiences that they use to grow and develop. And particularly for our student populations, low-income students, minority students, first-generation students, that ability to interact with faculty in a very close way, be it in person or be it through distance technologies, is really important. So we don't see our costs going down with a move to excellent remote instruction. And so I wouldn't at this point advocate for a lowering or a change of tuition based on doing more online instruction or not.
Okay, I appreciate that clarification. I didn't realize that, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? I've been moved the question. Although in favor of, of the proposals, please say aye, one at a time, Rob, starting with you, you're on screen.
Rob. Me. Yes, aye.
Yes, okay. Maren Lee?
Aye.
Sandra Bregay?
Aye.
Kim Sanchez-Rial?
Aye.
Rob Schwartz?
Aye.
Melissa Henry?
Aye.
And myself, aye. And the motion passes. And thank you for a very helpful explanation, Paul and Ava and Teresa. The next item is approval of the consent docket. Now.
Actually, Regent Brown, we have one more item and that is the fiscal year 20 bar.
Oh, okay, so the, okay, want to put that on there? Okay, let's do that.
Okay, thank you very much. So we're now requesting approval of the budget adjustment request bar for fiscal year 2019-20. So this is also being submitted to the Higher Education Department and normally due May first, but we had an extension on this because of the rapidly changing budget situation. And this bar does reflect changes in numbers related to coronavirus and the, actually, related to coronavirus. So it was really important that we get this information in. And it requires regental approval and is normally done towards the end of the fiscal year to make sure that the revenue and expenses that has been approved by the regions actually match what actually happened. So as before, I'll give a very brief overview of the main and branch campus bar report and then Ava Level will come in and provide information about the health sciences bar. Your ebook materials contain many more details on the changes reflected in the bar. So if we go to the next slide, actually, do we have anything, main and branch, next slide after that? The primary drivers of the change in the main campus budget are the increase in CARES Act relief funding that has arrived and funding related to capital projects. Our branch campuses are also experiencing some changes related to moderate increases from the prior year. So as you can see in the next slide, we have the, when we have the graphics, other changes and transfers, there we go. So you can see our original budget that we submitted to the state was eight hundred and eighty-four million dollars. The revised main campus and capital is up to nine hundred and twenty-five. So as I mentioned, the main changes in that are CARES Act relief funding that has come in and some funding related to capital expense, which is twenty-two percent. And next slide. So in summary, it's a four point seven percent net increase. CARES Act came in with twenty-two million dollars, nine point four for bond refunding activities related to capital projects and an additional nine point five related to non- endowed activities. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ava Level to review the changes in the total bar related to HSC.
Good morning again. Advance on then, there we go, one more. There we go. So the bar, and I like the way Regent Sanchez-Rial said it, it's really on a normal year, kind of normal year like this year. It's a cleanup operation for our budget. And so it is, of course, we're required to submit the final revised budget, which is the bar by May fifteenth this year. We cannot exceed our budget authority by exhibit. An exhibit is the, the way the HED looks at everyone's budget and exhibit means something like ING is an exhibit and research is an exhibit and public service is an exhibit. So we have to make sure we have enough budget in each one of those and there are several more exhibits. So only the hospital and the academic HSC are required to submit a bar to HED. Our SRMC and medical group do not have to do that. So next slide. So for the academic enterprise, we, our request for the bar is a twenty-six point four million dollar increase in expenditures and that's about three point eight percent. and that's about 3.8% of our total $688 million in expenditure. And that is all in our public service exhibit. And, and that's, for the Health Science Center, doesn't really fit us, but the rest of higher ed doesn't have clinical, so we get forced to put our clinical into public service. And that's really expense to support physicians and physician efforts. The revenue increase, which is 28.1 million, that came in to support this $26 million increase really came from enhanced Medicaid upper payment limit, which was from the state of New Mexico under Medicaid to help support physicians, and that's the majority of that. It does leave us with that, this bar leaves us with a 3.3 million positive net margin on the academic side. Next slide. Um, overall, the net margin impact to the Health Science Center has caused us to have some reductions. We have a net margin reduction of about 11 million. And our academic enterprise was on track to generate a much higher net margin. And so we have included these things in our bar. Next slide. For our UNM hospital, the changes for the bar is a 34.4 million net increase in expense, mostly as a result of the expense side of our consulting fees related to all of our operational improvements. And this represents a 2.9% of the $1.2 billion original hospital budget. We also had a 56.5 net increase in, increase in net revenue due to the operational improvement initiatives, again, that we were, that we were spending the money on. We also really improved our revenue. Although we're, we are projecting a $7 million net loss, and that's really all due to the, our projection of the COVID environment. Now, as of yesterday, some of that changed, right? We did see some new hospital revenues, Medicaid revenues that may come in, and we're modeling that. So this is what we knew as of two weeks ago, close to what we knew. Next slide, and I think I'm, I mean, again, we've gone over what's happened to the hospital there, so I'm not going to go through that in detail. And I believe that is the end of my presentation. Next slide. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Ava. Questions of Ava?
Or Teresa?
For Teresa's, aye, okay.
Okay.
Hearing none, I would move, approve, I would ask for a motion to approve the, this year's bar, the 1920 adjustment, both for main campus and HSC. Is there such a motion?
I so moved, this is Rob Schwartz, I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Seconded, this is Regent Henry.
Okay, any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, I'll call for a roll vote. Regent Schwartz and Henry have already voted. Regent Lee?
Yes.
Regent Doty?
Yes.
Regent Sanchez-Rial?
Yes.
Regent Bagay?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion passed. Thank you very much for helpful explanation. Okay, onto the consent docket. I would suggest that we approve the consent docket with the exceptions, well, that we approve consent items B, C, D, E, H, and K. And then we'll take the other items up individually for approval. Is there a motion to that effect?
Don't move, this is Sandra.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Regent Schwartz. If there's no other questions or comments, I would vote, I would ask for the vote. And Regent Schwartz and, and Bagay, I guess it was, that made the second, will take your vote. I'll vote yes, Regent Sanchez-Rial?
Yes.
Regent Henry?
Yes.
Regent Lee?
Yes.
Regent Doty?
Yes.
Okay, the approval, the consent docket with those exceptions pulled out is approved. Let us now go to the approval of the ASUNM constitutional amendment. And Adam Biederwulf, are you on the line?
Yes, yes, Sam.
Would you refresh us on, on the substance of this?
Yeah, for sure. So this constitutional amendment is basically a revised procedure of how we will fill ASUNM senate vacancies. So this revised amendment will allow the vice president to accept applications to fill the vacancies if there aren't enough official candidates. So this was passed last fall by the student body and the senate with an 855 for and a 97 against vote. And our last checkmark, if you will, is approval from the Board of Regents. So it's very basic. I will stand for any questions that you may have.
Yes, so can you explain to me, what was the procedure, I'm sorry, Regent Brown, this is Maran Lee, can you?
Sure, sure.
Thank you, sorry, you kind of walked away, so then I just jumped in. Can you explain to me, what was the procedure prior to this amendment?
Yeah, for sure. So, thank you, Regent Lee. So the procedure prior was that the vice president would just go ahead and make appointments on her own, but this will allow all students to go through an application process if they are interested to serve as an ASUNM senator. And if you scroll or go to the next slide, the amendment should be highlighted, the one that I signed, yeah. So this goes into detail of just what it looks like according to our law book and our constitution, if you want to go ahead and read that. But basically, that's the only change. And then, once those applications are chosen by the vice president, then the, the senate will approve those applications with a two-thirds vote from the senate.
And what is your process if, let's say, you, the, out of the applicant pool, the vice president appoints somebody for that position and they don't get the vote? They don't, they don't get the two-thirds majority?
Then I believe, Regent Lee, the vice president would go back and appoint other applicants who wanted to serve as ASUNM senators.
Okay, one of the reasons I wanted this taken off consent is I think this is very important, and I commend you all for coming up with a process to clarify how those vacancies are filled. During my time as a regent, I have seen and heard from students who believed that they weren't given any opportunity to join the student leadership, that it was a very closed group, and it was futile to even to attempt to become involved. And I, and I think that that chills, you know, the people from wanting to be involved. And, and you, you miss out on some good diverse views. So I, I give you great credit for getting a process in place. And I would move that we accept this.
Is, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second from Regent Doty, any other questions or comments? Hearing, hearing none, I'll call for the question of, Regents Lee and Doty have moved in second. Regent Henry?
Yes.
Okay, Regent Bagay?
Yes.
Regent Sanchez-Rial?
Yes.
Regent Schwartz?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so the motion is passed. And thank you for your concern, Regent Lee, it's, it's important that this be done right and inclusively. Next item is item F, the approval of the third quarter financial actions report and certification through March 31, and the third quarter informational financial report, informational financial report. Teresa Constantinidis, do you want to pick up on this?
So this one actually will be done by our university controller, Elizabeth Metzger. Liz, are you out there?
I'm here. Good morning, Regent and President Brown, Regent Stokes, or President Stokes and members of the committee. I'm here to present the quarterly financial certification report for the third quarter ending March 31, which is required by the Higher Education Department. And if you're not familiar with this report, it consists of six questions that are essentially related to the university's ability to meet its cash obligation, with a final question regarding the university's current budget situation as it compares to the original budget submitted and approved at this time last year. So the sheet, the slide we're looking at now shows those questions. The first question of the report asks whether the university had to ask for an advance on our state appropriation. And questions two through five ask if the university failed to make any of our large payment obligations. As you can see from the slide, we've answered questions one through five with a no. Question six asks if the university has experienced any significant actual or anticipated changes not reflected in a budget adjustment request that would result in a substantially reduced year-end fund balance. For this question, we have answered yes, and we have provided the requested supplemental information on the next slide as to the reason for a yes answer. As we previously reported in the first and second quarterly reports, the fall enrollment for the university was down 7%, which exceeded the anticipated enrollment decrease. This enrollment decrease is expected to result in a 4.6 million shortfall in tuition and fees revenues for fiscal year 20. And this shortfall will be covered by central reserves. As of this third quarter report, we do have additional information to provide due to the COVID financial impact, to the extent that we were able to measure as of March 31, which was only a couple of weeks into the university's limited operations period. At the time of this report preparation, we were able to determine that the auxiliaries and athletics revenues would be down approximately 7.7 million due to a combination of lower enrollment, reduction in ticket sales, media rights income, and the impact of refunds made to students for housing, dining, and parking due to the move to limited operations. In addition, on the income side, we also were aware at this time of 17.2 million that would be available to UNM from the Department of Education CARES Act, with 50% of the 17.2 million earmarked for student aid, which we received on April 27th and was dispersed to our students. We're still waiting for the second 8.6 million for institutional COVID costs, which we applied for on April 22nd. This information was also part of the president's report, in addition to further information that we are, you know, aware of as of more current. The university's budget adjustment request has incorporated all of the presently known COVID impacts as presented to you earlier. President Stokes' report also included more current information on the financial impacts of COVID. I'd be happy to answer any questions on this report, if you have any.
Are there any questions for the regents? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved, this is Rob Doty.
Seconded.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second from, from?
Yay.
Sandra, okay. Hearing further questions or comments, I'd call for the vote, and I'll take those two votes as affirmative. Regent Schwartz?
Yes.
Regent Henry?
Yes.
Regent Bagay? Regent Sanchez-Rial?
I made the motion, sorry, this is Sandra.
Yes.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, okay, Regent, Kim, do you have a vote on this?
Yes.
And, and I vote on it, I missed, if I missed anybody, please speak up.
Yes.
Oh, there you are, thank you, you're up a tree there. Okay, let us pass that then, that's approved unanimously. And by the way, before we move on to the athletics, we're two and a half hours into this thing, we have about another dozen things to talk about or to pass. If anybody wants to get up and stretch, I would, I would propose, we don't have a formal break. I don't want to lose people, but if you want to get up and stretch or you want to run off to the next room for a moment, that's entirely understandable. But I think I'd like to motor on unless there's objections. Okay, all right, let's do that. Okay, item G, the third quarter athletics enhanced oversight program report and the certification through March 31, and the third quarter information on athletics report by sport through March 31. Any general comments, Director Nunez?
Yes, I appreciate it, thank you, Regent President Brown, members of the board, President Stokes, good morning. I know this has already been a long day, so I'm going to try to go speak fast through this part at any point. Please feel free to interject if you have any questions. Definitely, definitely unprecedented times for us right now, for everyone, financially, socially. Before I get into the third quarter, I want to just highlight a couple of things during, you know, during this time, again, our athletic department has really focused on being leaders, not just as, as they do on the playing fields, but really leaders in this community during crisis. And I think from many things that you've seen, from messaging, as far as messaging to support, understand everything that's going on around us, to helping this, helping our community, helping our first responders, helping our frontline workers, as well as our great partners, to do everything we can. We feel for our, our perspective, staying positive, doing as much as we can day to day is, is where our, our focus needs to be, as well as, you know, supporting our student athletes. So hopefully, sports some way, somehow, through mech, through all the different mechanisms that, that may be from the support from our government, our governor, our president, everyone else, that we can be a mechanism to help rally our community, our state, to turn the corner. So works, we're, we're doing everything we can at this point. So as we go into the third quarter, I wanted to make sure that Nicole Dobson will jump on here in a minute to discuss the details of both the, the F, F I O P, whatever the, and the, and our third quarters. A couple of things I want to hit on, which is COVID-related items. Many of you heard that this during the FNF, and I just want to be able to, again, go through some of the challenges that we faced. After quarter two, some of the things that we were concerned with was our multimedia rights, some ticket sales, because we were still unaware of where we were going to be. We started our multimedia rights late, so we anticipated it was going to be a challenging year just because we started later in the year than, than anticipated. But we were making some great, great headway. Unfortunately, right when COVID hit, four areas really hit us really, really difficultly within our department. First and foremost was our media rights. Right now, our partners out there are, like many others, are challenged with this, this uncertainty of what's going to be. So that, that, that potential loss there of not making our, our revenue projection, it could be up to about a million dollars. And again, Nicole will go through all that here in a minute. The other one would be our scholarship fund. Our, with our donations and everything else, right now, we're anticipating anywhere between a 15 to 20% reduction in that area. We're going to continue to work diligently, we're going to work hard to do what we can, but we're also very understanding of where our donors are, where our fans are. And so we're trying to manage this as well as we can during this uncertain time. So those two are two areas that really affected us hard. Then the last two are things we really didn't have any control because of this COVID. One is our NCAA distribution. That was a $1.9 million, or excuse me, $1.2 million reduction that we weren't, we weren't anticipating from the NCAA. That on top of our special events, special events was about a 1.9. And that's everything from the high school championships, PBR, parking associated with United, with isotopes, other spring sport events, game guarantees for baseball and others, as well as, as you might have read in the paper this past weekend, the NCAA track meet was projected to be roughly about another estimated $1 million for the community. That's outside of us, but again, just those events, how important they are, not just for our department, our university, but our community as well. So those four are major drivers in why this F, this budget right now, this third quarter, is what you're seeing with that potential loss. So at this point, I'm going to go ahead and pass it on to Nicole. And then after she's done, I'll touch base on a couple of things we've done with FY20 and FY21 as far as looking at our budgets, and again, trying to streamline and right-size our department as much as we can with these challenging times.
Good morning, regents. So as Eddiean mentioned, we are here to present the third quarter financials through March for athletics. For this presentation, we'll focus on the summary report. So Schedule A, highlighting key points of the current year activity. Schedule B, which is also in the packet, is the expenses by sport in detail. And then we also have the enhanced fiscal oversight program report, which is essentially the same as Schedule A, but it's just in the HED reporting format. So if we could scroll to Schedule A, wonderful, perfect. So if we could scroll to Schedule A, wonderful, perfect. Okay. So starting with revenues, total revenues for third quarter were 2, 23.2 million. Pulled revenues, 17.7 million. And these are lower than prior year due to decreased revenues, primarily for media rights, 1.1 million down. Scholarship fund, down about $150,000. Gift and Kind, down 300,000. And it's important to note with Gift and Kind, it's a net zero to the net bottom line because revenues will be down, so will expenses. Special events and other revenues, $467,000. And this includes parking and concessions, which is driven by ticket sales. Transfers were reduced from prior year. However, we are still pending the pit suite revenue transfer, which is actually going to be made this month. So that's good, that'll be revenue coming in. Decreased revenues are offset by increases. This year, we had an increase in state appropriation, a slight increase in student fees, and then we did book our naming rights a little differently from prior year. So that's what kind of explains that change. Now, pulled revenues projected are projected to be lower than budget. And really, the reason behind this is largely driven by the impact of COVID-19. As Eddie had already mentioned, media rights, we are projecting to be down about a million dollars. We are projecting the scholarship fund to also be down about 200,000. The NCAA and Mountain West distribution, again, projecting to be down about 1.2 million. And then the special events and other revenues, we're projecting to be short about 2 million. But it's important to note that the net loss that we're projecting, so revenues minus the expenses, is $450,000. And again, those are big drivers from special events associated with the NMAA High School Championship, the Professional Bowl writing, parking, and other spring events. Jumping into directed revenues, 5.4 million. And so the majority of ticket sales have in fact posted. However, we are finalizing the ticket sale revenues with our media rights sponsors, and those actually have already posted this month. We do know that football ticket sales have came in with budget, so that's, that's good news. We are projecting, however, men's and women's basketball to come in slightly short from the budget numbers, but it's just slightly short from the budget numbers. Okay. Moving on to expenses. So total expenses, $25.4 million. Salaries and benefits, 10.2 million, which are trending slightly higher than original budget. And these increases are driven by slight increase in fringe benefits, and then the football severance payouts. But we do want to note that these expenses are going to be offset by future game guarantee revenues. Other expenses, 1.7 million. Those are trending down, again, due to Gift and Kind. Student costs, 5.1 million, which are lower than prior year due to the additional grant and aid support we received as part of our deficit reduction plan. And then this also assumes, we do think that grant aid is going to be trended pretty close to the budget, but this assumes no changes with summer, and we are evaluating summer grant aid right now. Travel, 3.7 million, which is higher than prior year due to the increased cost and the additional support that we got for men's and women's basketball. And so overall, we are expecting the remaining expense categories to trend close to budget. However, given the current circumstances with the changes in operations due to COVID, we are expecting expenses to actually be down in the next few months. And again, most of these expenses are associated with special events, sporting events that aren't happening, and then a little bit of decrease in travel. Okay, so overall, the third quarter ended with a negative net balance of $2.25 million. Again, we are projecting to have an anticipated shortfall for fiscal year 20, which we think could be up to 3 million plus. For that, I will stand for questions.
Just before I add, Regent President Brown, one of the things is, you know, for this, this fiscal year, several things that we've done since the beginning of this, this crisis is we put a spending freeze on everything, all purchases in our department. We've also adhered to, to the university-wide hiring freeze with several positions that we've held. We're tracking everything we can as far as tra, travel, everything else, of course, has been seized. So we've done everything we can possibly do at this point. We're kind of, most of, most of our, our expenses, of course, happen in the, in the winter, fall season, so this time's a little bit harder to, to minimize some of those costs. But going into FY21, it's given us an opportunity to really even take several steps forward when it comes to our, how we travel, everything else is going to get even more reduced, putting, giving us an opportunity to really be better prepared for FY21 with some of the challenges that may exist going forward. And that, again, is going to have several of those different factors, working with the Mountain West and the NCAA on reducing and, and kind of doing some different things with all sports, not just one or two.
Thank you, thank you, Eddie. Other questions from the regents?
Not a question, but a comment. In the Finance and Facilities Committee Report, Eddie might have mentioned this, but I didn't hear that, the detail today, is that several spring fundraisers were not held, which is another deficit in fundraising that happened to occur right when the virus hit. So I thought I'd add that piece, that that was just bad timing, a lot of things.
Thank you, Regent McGee. And what she's, what Regent Bagay's notice, just noted was, goes back to the, the, with our sponsors, our scholarship fund, which we lost our gala, which is a huge event for us. It's been actually two years in a row, we've, we've set a record there, anticipated this year to be another one. Unfortunately, we, we had to cancel that event, as well as our annual golf tournament. Both of those are real huge impacts to our scholarship fund. So unfortunately, right now, we were not able to have those two.
Thank you. Other comments or questions from regents?
Well, I, Regent Brown, this is Mary Ann Lee. I have a, just a comment, because I, you know, when it rains, it pours. And I just sort of want to do a cautionary tale about relying on some of these funds that, you know, especially the capital improvement funds, those can all be clawed back in a special session. And so I, I just want to put that caveat out there.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this point, I entertain a motion to approve item G, the athletic reports.
No move. Second, beginning.
Second from Sandra Bagay. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, I proceed to a vote, I'll take those two as affirmative votes. I'll vote yes. Regent Henry?
Yes.
Okay, Regent Schwartz?
Votes yes.
Who, who, I've not gotten, Regent Kim Sanchez Real?
Yes.
And Regent Henry, I think we got you.
Yes.
Okay, all right. I think that's the group.
I vote yes, too, Doug.
It's all right. I should have a roster in front of me. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item, item I, the approval of project construction, there's three or four items there, and who wants to take that? Is that going to be?
This will be Lisa Marbury.
Lisa, okay.
Good afternoon. I'm here with three projects, virtually here with three projects. The first one is to request for capital project construction approval for a Redondo Court Parking and Circulation Project. This lot primarily provides patient parking and emergency vehicle access to Shaq, but it also has ADA accessible parking for the, this area of campus, including parking for Mesa Vista Hall, Women's Resource Center, Advisement, Enrichment, Career Services, Johnson Center, and the Natitorium. This project will help maximize the use of the area by increasing parking capacity, improving stormwater management, providing safe drop-off and pickup areas, and will improve the design elements in the area. The additional parking spaces will help address the increase in services offered by Shaq, as well as the parking needs for the departments and the buildings that I just discussed. This total project budget is $820,000. $450,000 is funded from parking and transportation capital reserves, and $370,000 is coming from our FY20 B R N R funds. With that, I'll wait for questions.
Questions?
This is Sandra. I had asked the question in FNF, and I thought I would repeat it here, is that under the guidelines that we're operating with, with COVID, that there are ways that you can continue doing construction, given that's a necessary operation? Please clarify if I understood that right.
Regent Bagay, that's correct. So at FNF, I mentioned that construction has been deemed one of the essential businesses by the governor. And so our team, planning, design, and construction, is working with our vendors, our general contractors and architects, to continue those projects and keep them going. We are, PDNC is operating with their own, or will, will CDC and, and national guidelines on social distancing and those proper safety protocols. And we also require those safety protocols from all of our vendors, which they have provided to us. So an example is when you have to go onsite and you have to have a site meeting, only a few people, you know, limited number of people can go in, not, not, so, so many people only can go into the facility or the building, and those kinds of things. The way they have, hold their meetings, they don't share their equipment, those kinds of protocols are in place.
Thank you. I just also wanted to add a comment that in this venue for U N M having an ability to continue work, which keeps people employed and building our infrastructure in spite of our circumstances, is very admirable. So I'm, I'm very proud to hear about what we're able to do.
Yes, thank you. It's good for, it's a good economic driver for the state of New Mexico and for the, the people that it employs. So yeah, that's a good point.
Regent Brown, you're muted, but I have a comment. Still can't hear you.
Oh, it, it, it wouldn't allow me to unmute for some reason. Anyway, please go ahead.
And I think this might actually be a better question for Francie Cordova, and I don't want to put her on the spot, but I did see that she was one of the participants for the Zoom meeting. What does this do with regard to our issues with ADA compliance and ensuring that we are addressing? Because I think that actually is one of our biggest, my biggest fears is projects that go to make our campus more ADA friendly. And so I was wondering if there was any thought on prioritizing projects, and if this is one of those projects that would help us further our ADA compliance.
Chairman Brown, Regent Lee, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Dr. Francisco. We are proceeding right now with an RFP for the transition plan specifically for buildings, and this one will be included in, in our evaluation. The newer buildings, of course, typically are ADA compliant, and so we will be watching that closely, and we will also be looking at the buildings and the path of travels to all buildings in the new RFP, which we are about to finish up right now and send out for vendors to bid on for the transition plan.
Wonderful. What about this project in particular? Does this help with, was this an area that had been designated?
I, I don't remember specifically, but I will get that information to you, Regent Lee.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Lisa Marbury, do you want to talk about Taos?
Do you want to do all the projects at the same time, or approve each one?
Well, let's approve each one, I guess, probably the soundest way to go. Okay, on the Redondo Court, do we have a motion?
I move approval.
Okay, is there a second?
Second, Bagay.
Okay, second. And then any further questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll go down the list of Regent Lee and Bagay are already on a yes. Rob Doty?
Yes.
Rob Schwartz?
Yes.
Melissa Henry?
Yes.
Kim Sanchez Real?
Yes.
And myself. Okay, that's a yes, so it is indeed approved. I now have a roster. All right, second item.
Okay. Yes, so the second project I bring forward is for U N M Taos College Pathways to Career Center. This is an 11,650 square foot building that will house the Centers for Academic Success and Achievement, the Taos Education and Career Center, and the Career Services Programs. And it's all centered around the U N M Taos Library and the special collections. The building will contain one-on-one tutoring spaces, small dual-use classroom and meeting rooms, faculty and staff offices, and student work and support spaces. The Pathway Center will also preserve historical documents and media related to the natural and historic resources of the northern New Mexico as part of the university's developing natural resources program. The total estimated project budget on this is $5,575,000. That is made up of $4,300,000 from the 2018 GO bonds, Taos match of $1,075,000 from the E R G, E G R T, and then it does have $200,000 from the 2019 General Fund Appropriation.
Thank you, Lisa. Is there a motion to approve this item? May I have a motion?
To approve.
Second.
Okay, and there's a second?
Rob Schwartz seconding.
Rob Schwartz seconds. Is there any further comment or questions? Hearing none, I'll go for a roll. I'll take those two as affirmative. Regent Lee?
Yes.
Regent Bagay?
Yes.
Reg, I vote yes. Kim Sanchez Real?
Yes.
Okay, I think I got everybody. Okay, that's unanimous at this point. Let's move on to U N M Valencia Infrastructure Project.
Thank you. So this final project is for U N M Valencia. It's an infrastructure project. This project involves the consolidation of several capital needs at the U N M Valencia campus into one comprehensive project. The project includes remodeling a portion of the Student Union Building, a primary lecture hall, A101, and it totals 6,700 square feet of building renovation. But it also includes a parking lot and road rehabilitation and other landscaping around the campus. This project updates the student areas and provides safe and clear access to buildings. These renovations will extend the useful life and reduce existing deferred maintenance needs that they have at U N M Valencia. This project budget is 400, or $4,900,000, all of which is being funded from the U N M Valencia local 2018 county bond.
Thank you. This is our motion to approve.
No moved.
Mary.
Mary, okay. And is there a second from?
Sandra.
From Sandra, we'll take those two as affirmative votes. Regent Doty?
Yes.
Regent Schwartz?
Yes.
Regent Henry?
Yes.
Regent Sanchez Real?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so it is approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Last item on the, removed from the consent agenda is the approval of the capital outlay submission to the H E D. Lisa, are you going to take this, or?
Actually, this is Teresa, I'll go ahead and take it.
Okay.
Regent Brown. So I'm very pleased to be able to bring forth the U N M Capital Outlay Request Package for Fiscal Year 2021. And this item comes to you in two parts, and we bring these two parts to the regents each year for your approval, so we can then submit these plans to the New Mexico Higher Education Department by their July 1st deadline. The deadline is normally June 1st, but this year, because of all of the constraints, we were given an extra month. As a reminder, these are requests for funding that will be considered in the fiscal year 2021 year, in the budget process for 2021, for allocation in 21, 22, and beyond. And as Regent Lee mentioned, anything can be clawed back or not done, so we're, we're following the process as if we have a normal year, and we'll just have to see how it all plays out. So the first part is our capital priorities that require state funding, and I'll be speaking to the main campus and branch campus items. And later on in the agenda, the Health Sciences Center will review the Health Sciences capital priorities, however, they are listed on the sheet in front of you for you to see. So for the main campus, there are three recommendations here. The first one is the College of Fine Arts Facilities Renewal for a total of $5.3 million. That is made up of three projects, a Mesa del Sol A Track Repair at 2.2 million, the Center for the Arts Access Control for a couple buildings at $720,000, and then a Center for the Arts Roof Replacement at 2.4 million dollars. So this request for the College of Fine Arts is a carryover from fiscal year 2019/20 request. Last year, the U N M Capital Projects Leadership Team advised the president that this was the priority, and ultimately, U N M requested $10 million for facilities renewal in the College of Fine Arts. Unfortunately, no appropriation for this was made by the 2020 legislature. So this year, the Capital Projects Leadership Team, recognizing that this should still be the number one priority, scaled it back from its original 10 million down to 5.3 million dollars. Now, the other two requests- Now, the other two requests are for modernizing research facilities at $2 million and fire safety at $2.5 million for the total of $9.8 million for the main campus. For the branches, each branch has one request for Gallup its facilities repair and renewal at $1.125 million. For the Los Alamos Campus, they're requesting campus-wide infrastructure renovations of $1.8 million. Taus, also infrastructure improvements at $1.875. And Valencia, a Learning Commons Resource Center renewal at $600,000. So in total, including what is going to be requested by Health Science Center, is $41,215,000. If you have any specific questions about any of the projects, we can provide additional information. So I'd like to stop there and get the approval of the board or answer any questions related to the 2021 capital project requests for main campus and the branches.
I move approval.
A second. This is Rob Schwartz seconding.
And Doug, you're muted.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, I'll take those first two as approvals. And that was Regent Schwartz and Regent Begay. Were you the motioner on that? Regent Doty?
Yes.
Regent Henry?
Yes.
Regent Sanchez-Rial?
Yes.
And I vote yes. I think that covers us. And let us move on then to the HSC portion of this.
Actually, we're going to do the five-year plan, and then you can go into the rest of your approvals. And HSC, when they get to theirs, will do their requests, if that's all right.
Oh, however you like.
Okay, all right. So this will be fast. As you know, we're also required to submit by July 1, a five-year plan of all of our planned capital projects, regardless of fund source. So these aren't the ones we're necessarily requesting general funds or ING funds for. They're just all of them, and they must be approved by the Board of Regents. So therefore, included in, I think it's like pages 94 to 106, the next group of pages, you can see the five-year capital plan for the main campus, and each of the branch campuses has their own five-year plans. Everything we know of at this time that exceeds $300,000 is included on this list. So we need a request, or we need an approval of this list to submit it to higher education.
Do we have a motion to that effect?
Motion to approve. This is Regent Henry.
And a second.
Second by Regent Begay.
Okay, thank you. Further comments or questions? I'll call the vote. Regent Lee?
Yes.
Regent Doty?
Yes.
Regent Schwartz?
Yes.
Regent Sanchez-Rial?
Yes.
And Regent Brown says yes also. Thank you very much. Let's now talk about the, I guess, the HSC portion of this. Is it appropriate, Teresa?
Actually, you probably should just go through your agenda. So start with the ASAR, and you'll eventually get down to HSC, because it'll be in the order of the book in front of the region. So next, I'd suggest the ASAR approvals.
These are the degrees that are shown here.
Correct. That's the next one on the agenda.
Okay, well, in your capital, in your capital review, you skipped over the HSC ones.
So Regent Brown, what happened was when the HSC reviewed the, these requests, they passed it along to the Board of Regents for approval, but did not actually vote them into, vote to approve them. So they are now showing up in the regular HSC action items list. It's showing up at the bottom of the. So you'll see.
Then that approval incorporated the HSC then?
No, I think you should hear from Dean Levy on them. So you'll hear them later when they do their HSC items, the whole list of HSC items.
Hey Doug, could I clarify? I think.
Yes, please. I'm a little confused now. Yes.
Committee action items, the agenda items that were in consent from FNF were taken off and viewed, but the HSC committee has their report coming later in the agenda, and that includes some of their capital projects.
That's correct.
Okay, that's fine. We'll include them at that point then. All right, let us move then on to the degree candidates. And were you presenting those, Teresa, or is that Finney Coleman?
I believe that's Finney Coleman.
Okay, Finney.
Yes, thank you, Regent Brown, the rest of the Regents and President. We have, as you can see, the numbers, 4,204 pending degrees for spring 2020. These agrees, these degrees were approved at both Faculty Senate and at ASAR. And now Stanford, questions?
Any questions?
I'll move.
Who's that, who's that young student that you're holding there? Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
So, so, Marian.
Regent Lee, and second by?
Kim.
By who?
Sandra.
By Kim. Okay. I'll take that second by Kim as affirmatives. No questions or comments further. Regent Doty?
Yes.
Regent Schwartz?
Yes.
Regent Henry?
Yes.
Regent Begay?
Yes.
And Brown, yes. Thank you. Thank you, Finney. That's wonderful to see. I just wish we could have a proper celebration, but maybe we'll catch up at some future time. Lisa Lindquist, would you talk about the two items? Is Lisa Lindquist here, Dean?
I was just talking for about 10 minutes and was muted. I apologize.
I know how that is. That's my favorite.
Again, hello, President Regent Brown, Regents, and President Stokes. My name is Lisa Lindquist, and I'm the Director of the, excuse me, the Global Respect Advocacy Center. It's my privilege to bring forward two requests for posthumous degrees. These degree requests come from faculty, staff, and family members. And today, I speak on behalf of Kiana, oh, excuse me, it looks like Najee is the first one. Najee Flowers was a member of our football team, as well as a young man who was interested in pursuing his degree. He was looking to apply towards the Sign Language Interpreting Program once, right before his passing. And I just wanted to share something that one of his recommender shared, Amanda Luhon. She said that he had a natural way of interacting with members of the deaf community. He showed care, compassion, and respect that cannot be taught in the classroom. And because of this, I believe he would have offered unique skill sets, making him a great candidate for the Sign Language Interpreting Program. He has met all of the qualifications to receive a posthumous degree, and this was approved by Faculty Senate and ASAR. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions of Lisa? Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved, Marian.
Marian, is there a second? Who's the second?
Sandra.
Sandra, thank you. Thank you too. Hearing no other questions or comments, I'll take those as affirmatives. And is Regent Doty?
Yes.
Regent Schwartz? Regent Schwartz and Regent Henry?
Yes, sorry about that. Trouble unmuting, yes.
Regent Sanchez-Rial?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And with our profound regrets, we approve unanimously. Next one, would you talk about Kiana?
Absolutely. So Kiana Kalem was, towards the end of her degree, and was set to graduate. She unfortunately was stuck with a terminal illness. I had the pleasure of speaking with her mother about her at length. And really, she just wanted me to share with you that she was truly committed to her education, even throughout her illness. She really strived to stay the course, attain her degree, and was working very hard in the College of Education toward that pursuit. And unfortunately, was unable, very, by a very short margin, to attain that goal. But you can see from the letter from Dr. Riffenberry that she was in good standing as she is able to receive a posthumous degree. I know that, just from speaking to her mother, that their entire family would feel grateful if this was approved. And I, are there any questions?
Hearing no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved, Marian.
Marian and Kim, I'll take this as a second. Regent Doty?
Yes.
Regent Schwartz?
Yes.
Regent Henry?
Yes.
And I vote yes. I don't think I missed anybody. Regent Begay, yeah?
Yes.
Okay, that's unanimous. And again, with our profound sympathies to Kiana. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity.
And next is a very important enrollment update from Vice President Dan Garcia.
Thank you very much. Well, I'm going to go over some of the metrics that we've been tracking and are aware of. There are a lot of things that we know, a lot of things that we don't know. And then there's some gray area in between. So I'm going to talk primarily about incoming first-year student figures, but I'll touch on continuing student data as well. So up until this point, most of our key indicators were applications for admission, offers of admission. At this point, we do have some additional information. So the things I'm going to cover are what we call pieces of the puzzle. Key indicators, what we know now regarding student behaviors, some external data that you're probably very familiar with. And I've selected a couple of national surveys that I think give us a good sense of what the environment is. Other internal indicators and data, we'll, we'll share some housing figures, some new student orientation figures. I'd also like to talk about our yield efforts, some of the things that we're focusing on now to encourage and support those students who have been offered admission to select UNM and enroll in the fall. And then obviously, there's the unknown. There's a lot that we don't know. And President Stokes has spoken about some of the circumstances that we're under, as well as some of the steps that we're taking to develop plans and contingencies. Next slide, please. So these key indicators that we are looking at currently, and we share regularly with senior leadership, are, of course, our offers of admission, scholarship acceptance numbers and rates. And we'll go into more detail about each of these. I mentioned new student orientation, housing contracts, admitted and applicant student surveys, cancellations of applications, offers of admission. This is an important number that we'll talk about. And then, of course, fall registrations as of yesterday. Next slide. This is, this is a slide that you're probably familiar with, that we've shown before. The columns over on the left side indicate final figures for the enrollment and admission funnel for 2017 through 2019. You can see as of last Friday, figures for 2020. And you can also see last year at the same point in time. So where we're at currently is an increase of almost 20% in offers of admission to students. It's about 1,400 more offers of admission. That's a good sign. We're not yet at the admit rate that we hit last year. We're at about 64%. The challenge we have right now is that we've made probably about 3% or 4% more offers of admission to New Mexico residents. The majority of the offers have gone out of state. And of course, the yield is typically lower for those students, about 19% on offers of admission to enroll. And we also know that national data indicate that students are planning to stay, to some degree, closer to home. One of the other pieces I want to mention too is our cancellation rate. It's interesting, because last year, this time, we had 755 students that we had offered admission to indicated that they didn't want to take the offer. They're going elsewhere. This year, it's only 296. That's a decrease of 450 or 60%. We think that has more to do with the extension of the declaration date, the intent to enroll date, from May 1, as it typically is, to June 1. We joined about 400 other universities in extending this date to give students greater opportunity to weigh their options. So I think by June 1, we're going to have a better sense of student plans. Next slide, please. This is another interesting set of data, something we didn't have a couple of months ago. These are scholarship acceptances. So over in the left-hand column, you're going to see that in the dark font, these are out-of-state waivers and scholarships. In the red font, we've got those that are offered largely, almost exclusively to in-state students. And in the middle of this table, you can see the number of offers that we made for each of these scholarships and waivers in 2019 at this point, and how many students had accepted those, and also the percent that accepted. For 2020, we've made, we've made about 325 more offers of admission, offers of, I'm sorry, we've made substantially higher offers of scholarships to students. And we've had 324 additional students this year compared with last year accept their scholarship offer. About three weeks ago, that number was closer to 600, probably reflective of, again, the May 1 date last year versus the June 1 date that we've given students to accept their scholarships this year. Again, I think by June 1, we're going to see the accept rate continue to increase. So this is overall a good sign. We've had more students offered scholarships, and more students accept those scholarships. Next slide. This is probably more important in terms of what it means. So last year, we know the final figures for yield or number of students, percent of students that enrolled, that we offered the scholarship to. And then in the next column, going to the right, are the numbers of students that enrolled or the yield on those that indicated they were accepting their scholarship. For fall 2020, if we applied those same yields on offer and accept, you can see down at the bottom how the numbers would play out. There's a big gap between those two numbers. So I would say probably the yield on accept column to the far right is going to be the most useful to us at this point. As it stands right now, if the yield on acceptance of those scholarship holds, it seems to indicate we would see another 147 scholarship students enroll at UNM in the fall. This is not a typical year, so there's no guarantee, but at least it is a positive indicator at this point. And as we see the acceptances go up by June 1, we'll have updated numbers for you as well. Next slide, please. New housing deposits and contracts, these numbers are as of May 1. This is a comparison for the university housing in one of our partners, ACC. This largely represents new leases. There are some that are included in this figure that include transfer students and late renewals, but the majority are first-year students. We're about even with last year at this time. Our plans, our enrollment plan this year was to be very aggressive and increase enrollments across the board, continuing in new students. This is not a usual year. So this, although the numbers are flat, is actually positive that we have this degree of interest in this environment that this year, in terms of comparison with last year. Next slide, please. New student orientation registrations, these are figures as of the 6th of May. And although you can see that we are down for orientation registrations by about 16%, two weeks ago, this figure was, was a negative 25%. It's largely reflective, we believe, in the original plan to offer on-campus new student orientation and student concern that they are, that making travel plans at that time. Since the last few weeks, we have launched the online orientation option, which I believe is actually a very good product that's been developed by that team. It is, we've seen those numbers decrease. I think over time, we're going to see it continue to decrease as well, that gap. Next slide, please. Student registrations at this point. Student registrations, at this point, largely, we're talking about continuing students, some new graduate student registrations. They are down 8.5% compared with last year at this time. So you can see that only 11,000 students have registered for the fall. We know that our total student enrollment is closer to 23,000, 24,000 students. It's less than half of our total enrollments that we'll expect, so it's still early. Also, by way of comparison, last year, the same report, at the same time, showed that fall 2019 registrations were down 8.3% compared with fall of 2018. It's been a downward trend in student enrollments, but it is comparable with what we were seeing last year at this time. So again, not what we had planned for or made our target, but at least there's some degree of encouragement that student behaviors are fairly consistent with what we've seen in the last year. The bright spot is that the percentage of continuing students that are eligible to register for fall, meaning those that were enrolled in the spring and are not planning to graduate, is about even with last year at this time. So there's an indication that students who were enrolled in the spring are planning to come back, at least those that have registered thus far. Of course, the total figure is down by 625 students, and again, that reflects the downward trend in enrollment that the university has experienced over the last several years. Next slide, please. So some of the national survey data that you may be aware of, and a couple that I've selected that I think give us some indication of where mindset is across the nation, is first, the Ruffalo Levitt survey that was administered in March. This was very early on in the pandemic, and there was a great deal of concern then among high school seniors in particular, that the survey was aimed at. The big numbers are 86% being very concerned that cost will be even more important to their college plans. About a quarter of them were considering deferring enrollment at that time to their preferred school. That could be a very strong reaction that a high school senior might have in terms of considering what things might mean for them in the fall. And then 44% having second thoughts about the school they're likely to attend in the fall. Next slide, please. This was a much larger survey that was administered over a greater period of time and extending into mid-April, and it ultimately reached 23,000 respondents that were high school seniors. We can see that the number had dropped to about 7%, indicating that they were considering not enrolling or deferring admission for a year. We're seeing other national surveys that indicate students are still planning to go to college. They're not giving up on that hope, although still a sizable number, 40%, are reconsidering the schools on their list. It's not unusual, late into spring, for many students to be reconsidering schools, but we're pretty deep into that period. And so, given that many universities have extended their deadline for response to June 1st, they're contemplating still their options. And again, continuing deep into April, we see this figure of 88% of seniors very concerned about ability to pay. There were very few respondents from New Mexico in the survey, only 75 seniors, and 77% of them said they'd already made their final decision where to enroll. Next slide, please. We administered our own student survey to those that had been offered admission and those that had just simply applied. We received 574 responses. This was part of a larger national survey, and the responses may not necessarily reflect attitudes about U and M specifically, given that only about 11% of high school seniors applied to just one college or university. So of those, we're seeing some consistency with national surveys that a large number of these students, the majority, are saying they know where they want to attend or they plan to attend college regardless. 26% say college plans have changed. And when asked what has changed, 33% are saying attend to college closer to home. We're seeing that in national figures as well. That's good for us in many ways, we're the largest metropolitan area in the state of Texas, I'm sorry, the state of New Mexico. But we are also very dependent each year on enrollments from across the nation and across the globe. 42% indicate that they will live at home while attending college. And then 30%, this is interesting, will enroll at a less expensive college. We do have a distinct advantage in terms of being one of the least expensive four-year Public Research One universities in the nation. But 16%, only 16% are indicating that that change may go, drive them to a community college. Huge numbers of students are expressing concerns, anxiety, saying that they're excited, they're worried and overwhelmed. Only 16% of the respondents to the survey that we administered to our admitted pool and applicant pool indicated they were comfortable or calm. And I'll address this a little bit more in just a moment. Next slide, please. So other indicators that we can expect, as I mentioned, new student orientation registrations will continue to come in. I anticipate they are gonna continue to improve. In terms of that gap compared with last year at this time, we've got that June 1st scholarship deadline to accept, and then a extended June 1st housing priority date. We've extended the LOBO first-year promise to June 1st. This is a commitment to New Mexico residents that are at the median income level or below. We are going to ensure that college tuition and fees that are mandatory are going to be covered through a combination of institutional, state, and federal resources. And then we plan to administer in a few weeks, administer a student questionnaire. This is going to all be, go to all the students that have been admitted to the university to ask them their perceptions about our institution compared with peers, and help us better understand the influences in their decision on where they may plan to enroll. We have a series of smaller, shorter surveys to applicants and admitted students that are going to be accompanied by a video message from us, inviting them to participate. Seven questions, one of the questions is going to be, are we still among your college choices? It's gonna give us a much stronger indication up to this point of what their plans are. Next slide, please. So yield efforts, some of the things that we're very heavily engaged in are communications. We know that students and parents are indicating nationally they want more contact and more information about what's happening at colleges and universities. And so, we've been making phone calls, sending text messages, and engaging with students about their anxieties and plans and trying to assuage those. But we also have been engaged in very specific communications to parents. Not only have we developed a class of 2024 website that's been up for some time to give ongoing, updated information about our institution and the steps we're taking to ensure the health and safety of students, but what their next steps might be. And these personal messages are coming from me with contact information, allowing them to reach out directly to me with questions. And I've received a number, and it's been actually a pleasure to engage and find out what their concerns and needs are. We have been delivering virtual information sessions and tours to students. It's a mix right now of not only 2020, but 2021 prospects. Since we're not able to visit with families on campus for a tour, we're delivering these information sessions virtually, and we're getting a very good response. We've made substantial additional offers to New Mexico residents, not just additional offers, but we've been increasing the amounts to try to offset costs of attendance in college and attract more students to the institution. About two weeks ago, we made 350 additional offers to New Mexico residents above what we had already made. And then, of course, financial aid awards notate eligibility to the LOBO first-year promise. We want students absolutely to know and recognize that they have been awarded this commitment and that their tuition fees are covered. So those financial aid award letters have been modified to make this clear to them. We've been doing radio, TV, and billboard advertising to reinforce our presence and identify locally. Next slide, please. I think this may be the last slide, additional efforts. We are reaching out to branch campus students that may be ready for transfer. There are substantial numbers of students that come to us from the branch campuses. We do not want them to choose to enroll at U and M Albuquerque if they are not ready. And so we're having very good conversations with them about their preparations and supporting them if they are choosing to come in the fall. If they're not quite ready, and through those conversations, we're helping them understand what they may do to prepare. We know that students are gonna be most successful as transfers. The more credit they bring in, and the better prepared that they are overall. We're allowing students that are having challenges getting their transcripts from high school to us to self-report their GPA and offering conditional admission to them. We're doing that also with test scores. We're doing it in alignment with the admission requirements and standards that have been established. And it is a conditional admission, the expectation is that we will receive these at some point prior to the start of the term with testing. A challenge, we're giving students the option not to submit those, given that 80% of the students we admit, we do not admit with consideration to test score, and/or allowing them, which is probably going to be a requirement anyway, to take a placement test prior to registration, which will give us a better sense of their preparation for college-level coursework. And then finally, we've been reaching out to students that we admitted in fall of 2019, thousands of them, that chose not to attend U and M, but residents of the state that left for other institutions across the nation. We know that more students want to stay closer to home, and we think that this applies not just to high school seniors entering college for the first time, but those students that may want to return from other institutions and be closer to us. And we're in the process of communicating with those students that have reached out to us to help them, help essentially honor their original offer and let them get enrolled at U and M in the fall as easily as possible. I think that was the last slide.
Indeed. Dan, I just have to comment, Doug, here. Really appreciate all your efforts and how comprehensive your approach has been, and you're keeping us up to date, and we're just gonna keep all those fingers crossed that indeed they come. It's been such a challenging and unusual year. Comments, questions from the regions?
Just a few comments, and thank you, Mr. Garcia, for a great report. You know, we touched on some of these issues when you first came to U and M, and I think you've done an outstanding job of addressing some of the concerns that I had. And I know you've been working real hard to get the team together in all the outreach efforts and the interviews, so I just wanted to thank you, and I appreciate what you've done today.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Okay, this is information item, not requiring action, but thanks, thanks for all your actions, Dan. Let us move on to the compliance and audit and compliance committee, which is I chair. And Victor, would you please briefly go through the first two items?
Yes, thank you, President Brown. The audit and compliance committee have met twice. On April 7th, we held a special meeting for the presentation, selection and presentation of the external audit firm. The audit committee approved Moss Adams and KPMG to once again be our external auditors for the fiscal year 2020 audit. And Liz Metzger will have more information on the selection process and the specifics on the contract for the external audits. On May 7th, we had a full meeting to actually have the entrance conference for the 2020 financial statement audit. So even in the current situation, the external auditors have already begun audit procedures for the 2020 audit. We had a presentation and approval of the Los Alamos branch audit. We had six findings and six recommendations. The report is now currently at legal counsel, going through a redaction review for anything that needs to be redacted. And hopefully, by next week, we'll get that review back, and we will be able to upload the audit report to our internal audit website. The risk assessment, university-wide risk assessment survey was launched on April 30th, and we have currently, our deadline for, to complete the survey is May 28th. The risk assessment team are still targeting the completion of our risk assessment procedures and propose audit, propose work plans by August of this year. One other thing I'd like to just inform the board is Chief Compliance Officer Francie Cordova reported that the president's Ethics Task Force has completed our review and our charges. And I believe last week, the final report was submitted to the president's office, and internal audit and compliance offices look forward to implementing the recommendations that are noted in the final report. Finally, Compliance Director Rob Burford presented a comprehensive Clary crime reporting for U and M on-campus incidents as compared to other peer institutions. So that was a very extensive report that was presented, and that report could be made available to the board as requested. Other than that, I'll entertain any questions.
Any questions to Victor? Well, would you, Liz, then, would you pick it up from here regarding the approved contract?
Yes, thank you, Regent Brown, thank you, Victor. There isn't a slide for this, but I can briefly discuss the process of the selection and approval of the university external auditor that was presented to the audit committee at the April 7th meeting, which Victor mentioned. So U and M solicited proposals for the FY20 external audit of the university, which included its 10 component units, the NCAA required procedures on athletic activity, and the financial statement reviews of KUNM and KNME, which is required by the Corporation of Public Broadcasting. We received three proposals, which were evaluated by a committee of six university employees, representing the university hospital, the UNM Foundation, UNM Health Sciences Center, and the Main Campus Controllers Organization and Main Campus Sponsored Projects Area. The committee members independently evaluated each proposal, and the firm receiving the highest score was Moss Adams, with a subcontract to KPMG for the audits of the clinical areas. In addition to Moss Adams and KPMG, some staff from the state audit office will also be working on the audit, working very closely with Moss Adams. As I mentioned, the selection of Moss Adams was approved by the audit committee. Our contract has been submitted to the state audit office and was approved. And we had an entrance conference last week on May 7th. And some of the auditors are actually already beginning their interim work this week. So that's kind of where we're at, and I can answer any questions if there are any.
Any questions of Liz? Thank you very much for a helpful report.
You're welcome.
Regent Brigade, would you introduce Fahid, whose news just keeps getting better?
Yes, more good news from the Finance and Facilities Committee. We had covered majority of the items either through the consent agenda and also through the individual reports that were given, but we have one other piece of good news, and I believe Teresa you're going to present. And it's the results of the advanced refunding of U and M Series 2012 bonds.
So I'm just double-checking to make sure Fahid isn't on the list, I don't think I saw him.
I am here.
Oh, good. Fahid, do you want to go ahead and give that presentation?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, regions, President Stokes. When we brought forth the bond refunding of the U and M 2012 bonds, the regions at that time approved delegating the pricing authority to the president and the senior vice president. The terms of that delegated authority basically provide that the results of the refunding will come back to the board at a later date, hence the information item today. The results of the refunding were very favorable. The bond was extremely well-received out in the marketplace, and the university was able to benefit from very low interest rates. I believe the item is tab 12 in your packet. If you look at that, the second page, which is up on the screen now, the third column was the previous debt service that the university was paying. The third column is the new debt service. And then the fourth column on the right is the savings or the difference between those two columns. The refunding itself achieved a total present value savings of 7.92%. And the average annual debt service savings will be approximately 300. And the average annual debt service savings will be approximately $391,000. And that will be, the term of that is from fiscal year '21 through fiscal year '32. So that concludes my presentation.
Excellent. I'm so glad you guys were vigilant, watching interest rates to our greater advantage. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to Regent Schwartz, who you'd cover the Health Science Committee.
Yes, we have a list of candidates for their degrees, and we have Dr. Levy from the Health Sciences Center. Dr. Levy, are you still here?
Yes, I am.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your patience and your presence.
Thank you. I'd like to present the 521 graduates of the Health Sciences Center for graduation. It encompasses colleges of nursing, pharmacy, population health, the graduate degree programs, and the School of Medicine.
Do we hear a motion?
I moved. Maren.
Maren, okay.
This is the second. This is Regent Henry.
All right. Thank you very much. Any further comment or question? Hearing none, let us move to a vote. Regent Doty?
Yes.
Regent Schwartz?
Yes.
Regent Begay?
Yes.
Regent Sanchez-Rial?
Yes.
And myself, yes, passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item. Thank you very much, Dr. Levy. Sorry, the only other thing from our agenda, from the Health Sciences Committee, is the capital outlay budget. And in fact, we had decided that the Health Sciences Committee, as I recall it anyway, that we would defer to the FNF Committee on that issue, since that same, the same capital outlay was presented to FNF.
Well, we didn't vote that in at that time. Maybe you have a separate vote unless I missed some procedure.
Yeah, so I think that--
Teresa.
We had assumed that it would go to FNF, and as a consequence, there wasn't actually a committee decision by Health Sciences Committee on that issue.
So, sorry, this is Teresa, and I'm sorry about that. We must have just had our lines crossed. So we do need a vote to approve the $26 million appropriation request for capital planning, for HSC.
Thank you.
This is Sandra Begay. I move approval.
Is there a second?
This is Melissa Henry. I move to second that.
Okay, are there further questions or comments?
Yes, this is Regent Lee. Am I correct in hearing that there was no discussion? Was this just, was there any discussion in HSC about these?
There was. I mean, we actually noted what we saw. We noted what the, I don't think that there was any problem with it. It's just that we were deferring to the FNF Committee so that there wouldn't be two independent committee decisions on the same item, both being recommended, both with recommendations to the full regions. We were trying to clean up the process, I think, and maybe in doing that, we undermined the process.
Yeah, so that, yes.
That's, you know, what is it, the pathway to hell is paved with good intention kind of thing? My question, I did have a question, though, on the-- You know, I know the cancer vault has been one that has come up and is well-is needed. I'm just wondering, the priorities went through the same kind of vetting as main campus. I see Ava doing her, you know, wave and shake. Are these similar from years before? Or these, did these move up the list based on other issues and concerns?
And I felt guilty about taking this opportunity away from Ava anyway. So Ava, you're going to get your chance after all.
Ava, would you comment, please, next?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good. Yeah, so, yes, first of all, we did go through this at length in the HSC committee. And we had a process that started in October, gathering all of the requests from Health Science Center from each of the units. They came up to our leadership, which is, we call our core group. We actually went through them three separate times to make sure we had agreement. I will say that there is four items on the one that showed up in FNF that had the main campus on it for HSC, and only three here. So after that one was done, HED came back and requested us to go down to three items and not four. So we then reprioritized, and we took the College of Pharmacy planning for the building off, and we are going to work on trying to fund that internally over the next two years, and since we had to take one off. So these three items, the first one being the simulation activities, that one is, you know, how more and more to teaching clinical skills with simulation, with mannequins, with software. And so enhancing that is just huge, especially, you know, in this current environment. And it is less expensive than trying to get people out into clinical areas. So that one is across the Health Science Center. It's not just nursing, not just pharmacy, not just school medicine. It's everybody can use that simulation and increasing our simulation center.
Ava, including the branch campuses, I know that that was something that was big in Gallup with the paramedics and the fire, if I recall correctly?
Yes, and I would have to defer, Dr. Levi is the expert in all of this. I'm the kind of the financial person, but she has put this together with all the deans. And I assume that also includes whoever else could use this. And they could certainly benefit from the work we're doing here and training them in Gallup, I would think. So then that next one is just our Rio Rancho Orthopedic Center of Excellence has been approved all the way through the State Board of Finance. And so this is for some new equipment, some extra equipment out there to do more research and teaching for, in the rehab and orthopedic areas. And that's what that request is. And then, as you said, the Cancer Center Vault comes back from last year, didn't get funded last year, and is very much needed and comes back again. And so those are the requests for the current year for the HSC.
Regent Brown, if I may, with regard to the orthopedics, they've been long needing assistance, and it's sort of a catch-22, if I'm not mistaken. They're kind of our bread and butter, but we've hamstrung them with not being able to compete with our private, you know, competitors in the marketplace with equipment and facilities. So with those questions, I would move approval of this.
Is there, is there a second? I'm sorry, who was that, second?
Sandra, second.
Sandra, okay, thank you. Are there further comments or questions? Hearing none, I'd ask for approval by Regent Doty?
Yes.
Regent Schwartz?
Yes.
Regent Henry?
Yes.
Regent Sanchez-Rial?
Yes.
I vote as unanimous. Thank you very much for that presentation. There's no closed session.
Excuse me, Regent Brown, one more item. We need the five-year plan for HSC capital projects to be approved by the board.
Oh, okay. So I thought that was covered before, but all right, let's go with that.
This is in addition to the last, addition to the last item. But again, this was an issue that was noticed by the Health Science Committee, but not in fact acted upon.
Yeah, I would like to request that these things, all these financial capital projects somehow be lumped together, because I think we invite confusion here. So let's proceed on this five-year capital plan for HSC, those items. Rob, are you making that motion?
Sure, I'll move that we approve that five-year plan.
Is there a second?
I'll second. This is Regent Henry.
Okay, thank you. Regent Lee?
Yes.
Regent Doty? Regent, Regent Doty, Regent--
Sorry, yes, yes, yes.
Regent Begay?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. It's unanimous. Are there any other items that I overlooked?
Regent, President Brown?
Yes.
This is Provost Holloway. I just would like to note that after an extraordinary term, we shouldn't miss the fact that we just graduated 4,700 new Lobos. And I think while there won't be a graduation this Friday, we should give them a round of applause.
I agree, yes. Actually, this is the, this is the round, this is the virtual applause symbol. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, and thanks to everybody for going through this maiden voyage on a full virtual meeting. And I appreciate your patience for taking us through almost four hours. But it was a very meaty, meaningful meeting, and your participation was terrific and your preparation by all presenters. And I thank you very much. And we'll go through into June with all appendages crossed that will be presented with something that we can live with and thrive with. And again, Ryan, Brian Gregg, and Adam Biederwulf, and all the advisors who were changing over, you've been terrific, and Godspeed, and we thank you so much.
Regent Brown, there's a few advisors that would like to say a few words.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, that wasn't at that point on the agenda. So, okay, let's do that.
Advisors' comments now.
Okay, didn't hit, didn't hit my agenda for some reason. Okay, Adam?
Yeah, awesome. I'd love to speak. So thank you, President Brown and members of the board. I'll keep this quick, just because we've been here for a while. But I just want to thank you all for an incredible year. I want to thank-- Listening to the student voice during decision-making processes. I want to thank Provost Holloway for his work, all the leadership at the university, obviously President Stokes. You know, I really just kind of want to talk about the adjustments that we've made as a university and the adjustments that President Stokes has made, you know, with online learning and with online graduation. God, I hate to get emotional, but my fellow students, myself, we've been going through a lot this semester, you know, trying to milk the last bits of our Lobo experience in our living rooms and trying to accept a virtual graduation. But I think there's always silver linings to any tough situation. And I think for this situation in particular, you know, my fellow students, we're all learning one of the core elements to life, and that is perseverance. So in the next couple of years, when all this madness ends, I hope you guys understand that myself and my fellow students, we're going to be making the biggest contributions, the biggest impacts, not only to New Mexico, but across the country. And I am so happy and I'm so grateful to have you all as the leadership of this university, because it has given me so many opportunities, and it has been the best experience of my life. So thank you all so, so much. With that being said, she is not here, unfortunately, but the next ASUNM president is Mia Amin. She's an incoming senior studying business administration. And you all are so, so lucky to have her, because she's one of the greatest leaders that I know on this campus. So I know that she is going to do an incredible job. But again, I just want to thank you all for an incredible year.
Thank you. Virtual applause to Adam, please. Okay, Afso?
Thank you so much, Regent Brown, and all the board of regents and all the UNM leadership. First of all, I really want to thank our UNM leadership and members of the board of regents and how important it was at that time when we had to make the tough decision, and they came up with very, very creative, creative decision and help our, not only our UNM, but all the communities. So I really want to give a big shout-out to you all for working in this, you know, unprecedented time and all this challenging circumstances. And I am really humbled, and it was a wonderful opportunity and honor to represent and for being a vice of all the graduate and professional students at UNM and working with all of you and all the decision-making to help alleviate and help to make a better decision. And I'm really thankful for the opportunity that was given to me. And I believe this was one of the best decisions I have ever made, to not only come to UNM, but also representing the students' voices. And that really, I don't want to miss the opportunity. And this actually has given me an opportunity to recognize the importance of giving back to the communities. And I believe my next life experience will be definitely, will be reshaped by this experience of being at UNM and being the president of GPSA. Because I really want to go back to different communities that I don't know where I'll be, but I would like to give back to the communities. And if I would like, if I got a chance, will definitely will work to alleviate UNM and help to lift the New Mexico communities. And I want to thank President Stokes, all the members of the board of regents, and all the UNM leadership for their response and working hard to make the very best decision. And especially to the Duane Arudy, because he, this was a tough job for him to come up with all this, you know, initiative to help doing all the campus operations online. So I really want to thank him for his services as well. And I want to congratulate all the graduates, all the students who are graduating. And I know this was not, they are going through a lot, but that's why we are prepared at UNM, and that's why we are Lobos. So I really wanted to thank everyone for being very strong in this challenging time. And I wish good luck to them for their future endeavors, and we are Lobos forever. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Afso. You've been terrific. You've really helped further activate the graduate students. Really appreciate your help. Finney Coleman? Is Finney here?
Yes, I'm here. So I also want to echo all of the comments that have been made so far this year. I think this class of graduating seniors is a remarkable class. I just, I have so much, you know, I feel so badly that this class won't have the traditional graduation that we're so used to here at this university. I think this, this horrible, horrible crisis, I think has demonstrated to me at least just how important the ceremonial life is of our university and how much, and how important it is for us to maintain our traditions, you know, going and having faculty and staff participating in those traditions along with our students. So I'm looking forward to graduation when we, when we have it. Congratulations to that class. Congratulations to all the student leaders and my buddy Ryan for everything that they've done this year. This was my first year as faculty senate president, and it's been one of the most fulfilling and just mind-expanding years of my professional career. I'm very thankful to the provost and the president for their guidance and help in terms of professional development as well, especially the provost. So thanks for everything that they've done this year. We are going to form three ad hoc committees that like for the fact, for the board of regents to be aware of. The first of these will address some of the policy alignment issues that we as faculty think are important to address, making sure that all of our policies are aligned and are in compliance with the board of regents policy. So we will forward an ad hoc committee. We're forming an ad hoc committee to address those, to address those issues and come to the board of regents, obviously with recommendations in terms of policy alignment. We are forming an ad hoc committee that will work with the various stakeholders around campus to look at branch campus students and their persistence rates. And then finally, we'll, we will form an ad hoc committee that will look at race and campus climate this coming year. All of these ad hoc committees have a two-year lifespan, one year of study, and then one year of implementation. I'm a member of the faculty that was implicated, threatened in this horrific racist attack on Africana Studies here recently. And, you know, I want to-- And, you know, I want to thank all of those individuals around our campus who rallied and sent letters of support to Africana Studies. I can tell you that those letters meant a great deal to all of us who are within that community. I had an interesting conversation actually in Walmart with Martha McGrew. And one, and one of the messages, messages that I'd like to send to our community is a very simple one. We're long past the moment when we have the luxury of imagining that these attacks are solely on the black community. These are attacks on every person of color on our campus, and that means every person of our color, independent of what they might imagine themselves to be racially, culturally, politically, what have you. These are, these are attacks on our community. And when we can start to see it that way as opposed to it's an attack on them, those people over there will have come a long way as an institution. Leadership Conference will be in August. We have a newly seated Faculty Senate, and we continue to fill committee chairs and look for a statement from faculty governance regarding the difference between faculty governance and shared governance. And want to continue to encourage the university to take seriously the, the concerns of faculty who have unionized. You know, faculty governance remains neutral in terms of having, you know, a position on whether we should or should not unionize, but absolute unflinching support for our colleagues who have chosen to take on this incredible effort to unionize. And we hope the university will continue to respect us as faculty and understand that this is a powerful watershed moment in our university's history where we can truly demonstrate to the rest of the country what the kind of inclusive excellence we have on our campus and model for the rest of the country what these relationships can look like. We don't want to replicate what has happened before. I encourage University Council, the President's Office, the Provost to continue to try to respect this process and to listen to what my colleagues are sharing about their concerns with unionization. With that said, thank you for an absolutely wonderful year. Regent Brown, appreciate your leadership. And the rest of the Regents, thank you very much for the moment to, for the opportunity to address the board.
Well, Finney, thanks for your wise and sensitive comments, and we so look forward to your continued leadership. Thank you. Ryan Gregg.
Perfect, thank you. I think I actually have some perfect slides here for you. So I'm working right up until the last moment. So I'm going to take this opportunity to give you what I would normally, you know, give to the board as a presentation. So I just wanted to give you some quick updates. We have been certainly impacted in terms of process and personhood by COVID-19. And we've heard a lot about, you know, what has gone on for, for our students and for our faculty for sure, but I want to just underscore and reiterate that, you know, the first time I spoke to the board, I gave that great, at least great in my opinion, you know, perspective of staff as the skeletal system. And so the ability of the university's staff to quickly be flexible and adapt to servicing our student and faculty colleagues is truly remarkable. And so as I've heard from individual staff, I've been absolutely flabbergasted by their ability to very quickly be flexible. And so I'd like also to extend a thanks to Dwayne and the IT folks because they're ensuring this can happen for us. And, and I think it's really important to, to talk about. You may or may not have heard that the Staff Council initially postponed its elections. We have elections each year for representatives from the various grades or precincts. And so we postponed those elections because they were scheduled to be the week right of spring break. So we were headed right into it and we weren't really sure how many people were going to be able to get access, how they would actually engage with the election. Subsequent to that, though, our constitution does require that they be held in the spring semester. And so we held them the first week in May because we thought that we could actually get to a place where we could deliver some access. And we had some unprecedented solutions to solving those access challenges, but we did reschedule them. And I'm happy to report to the board and to the university community that we had more people vote in this election than we did last year. So our outreach efforts were successful, at least I think in my opinion. But we are going to move forward and address further considerations for how we increase access to the vote going forward. We also instituted a Staff Council Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee. I consider myself to be a person who's really attentive to these issues, but we can't rely on, you know, one person in one position to think they're that important. And so we thought it was a really shrewd practice to create something that would ensure that we take these issues seriously. And they've been very helpful so far, certainly in trying to extend the access to that election. Our staff, as Staff Council President, I also participated in a staff and faculty virtual town hall that was organized by the university's DEI, and that was very helpful. And then we're also continuing to work on our, our five-year strategic plan. Our current one expires this year, and so hopefully in a month or so, we will have a detailed five-year plan. Next slide, please. Perfect. I also want to introduce here some great pictures of myself along with the new president of the Staff Council. Nancy Shane is a program evaluator in the School of Medicine. She's a precinct representative on the council, and she's been a member since 2015. So I am fully confident that Nancy will be able to hit the ground running. She's had a great year serving as president-elect, and she's ready to take over. And I'll be here in the role of past president. So I'll still be involved a little bit in the mix, but you won't see me, you'll see Nancy. Next slide, please. We did also continue our tradition of having our staff as students event. We do this once each semester, but this actually was done totally virtually this year. And I want to extend special thank you to Deborah Kiltika, Associate Director in Admissions, and to Sheila Jurnak, our registrar. They developed the processes to waive the fees for applications if a staff person needed to apply to the university. And then they also then worked to ensure that the registration, the early registration could be completed. So without their help, we definitely wouldn't have been able to do this. And so I'm really excited about the way that we were able to adapt again and make sure that staff could register for their courses. Next slide, please. And then because this is my last opportunity to speak to all of you, I wanted to highlight one area that reached out to me and I learned about the work that they're doing that I thought was really important to include so that you know some of the important work being done by staff to get through this really difficult time. So probably everyone's familiar with Project ECHO. They have about 100 staff and 40 faculty, and they normally provide between 30 and 35 programs in their effort to reach all the different areas, not just in New Mexico, but globally, to export those really fantastic medical content that they've got. But they stopped all of those programs so that they could build 12 COVID-19-specific programs. And since they did that in March, they've had over 10,000 attendees at those 12 COVID-19 programs. Next slide, please. So here, I just want to briefly show you some of these things and then talk about the one that I heard about and how I got involved with them. But they're actually helping to make sure that every person who needs these pieces of information can get them. So infectious diseases, critical care, multi-specialty, first responder resiliency, community health workers, and echo education, those are all things they developed very quickly to make sure that we could take what we know works and export that so the communities dealing with COVID-19 can also benefit from that knowledge that we have. And then there are also some special sessions, and this is where I got involved. The first special session that they created was a collaboration between the Echo Institute, UNM, and the Department of Health and the New Mexico Health Services Division. The second they created was COVID-19 safety topics for New Mexico early childhood professionals. They provided education related to the physical, mental, and emotional well-being of very young children, their parents, and early childhood teachers. And then the third, and this is where I got involved, was a special session which was virtual online education for parents, to educate parents of school-aged children regarding the online education, critical information systems that schools are now asking parents to get involved with. So Project ECHO, I really want to shout them out and make sure they, that everyone knows the amazing work they've been doing. And it's a great collaboration between faculty and staff, but there are a lot of staff who were involved in, so that's why I wanted to highlight them. I think I might have one more fun slide. So this, I just wanted to give you one last thing. This was probably the thing that made me the happiest over the last year. And I'll just take a couple more seconds to wax poetic maybe, or maybe not poetic, but wax anyhow, to just talk about this last year of service. It's been dramatic. We've had some fantastic highs, but we also find ourselves among some deep lows at the moment. And I'm hopeful that these comments are going to be heard, not just by the Regents, but everyone, because I feel like it's important. I really, truly believe that getting involved has made a huge difference, especially looking forward. University decisions are tough, but UNM has really exceptional structures for shared governance. And certainly since President Stokes' arrival, we've recommitted to those structures of shared governance. And staff and Staff Council have worked with administration to do some really great things this year. We instituted paid parental leave. We're still finalizing, but we created a pilot program to give recent graduates who have disclosed a disability, the opportunity to secure professional intern positions among our staff so that they can get that work experience that research has shown us is not always available for these students. And we also worked with the Legislature, Government Affairs, the Budget Leadership Team, and Administration to get to that 4% comp number. And, you know, I know that this could change, and I really want you to know that I'm trying to do my best to convey to staff that compensation is realistically a function of what the state does for us. And so we should pay very close attention to that. But at least for me, the point is that if we as constituencies of the university take initiative and get involved in these shared governance structures, we can work together to make UNM the best place to work, live, and learn. And maybe it's because this is my last meeting, but I just want to go a little farther, if you'll permit me, and say that I want to really caution members of the university constituencies, especially now, not to make flippant, simple suggestions about which programs we might just cut to solve our challenges. It's really easy to suggest something like, let's just cut football. But in many cases, it's ignorant of the factors that surround those programs. And my point is that each of us has to be taken seriously, but we can only do that if we do our research and if we do our homework. And when it comes to Staff and Staff Council, I'm proud to say I think we did that. I certainly know it's not easy, but it is the responsible way to engage in this work because none of us is an island and we're all in this together. So let me just end by saying I'm thankful for and grateful to Adam Mohammed, Alexis, Finney, Bev, Randy, for their thoughtful leadership because we know this is important. And I'm really thankful to you, members of the board, President Stokes, and other administrators, for your continued commitment to those shared governance processes because we've been able to do a lot. And so I'm hoping in a year, we can look back and see that most of the COVID impacts are behind us and get back to the business of expanding UNM to fulfill that goal of being the university for New Mexico. So thank you, I appreciate it.
Ryan, thank you so much for a very active, productive year, and we certainly look forward to working with Nancy. Also want to thank you for all your help in the admissions and enrollment area. I know you've been a real stalwart there, and thank you for that, too. Beverly, do you have, Beverly, do you have some comments?
Yes, I sure do. Am I unmuted?
No, you're live, you're live.
Okay, great, great. I'd like to thank everyone for that opportunity to serve this last year as UNM Retiree Association President. And I'd like to just highlight a few things that the Retiree Association's done. We've really appreciated our enhanced collaboration with the university, specifically with the Human Resources Department and their, as they're providing our administrative support and helping us with membership tracking and listserv consolidation, their help is greatly appreciated. We established this year four $250 scholarships to help students with the cost of books and fees. We've sponsored several social and educational programs, including Successful Aging with Janice Knopfle and tours of the Brain Exhibit and the Jim Hensett Exhibit at our local museums. We sponsored a coffee hour at the Flying Star before COVID, and we had a well-attended holiday open house. Although the short legislative session was mostly focused on para and retirement program this year, our Legislative Committee worked hard to educate legislators about the importance of the ERB Retirement Program to the recruitment and retention of the state's educators. We're proud that one of our UNM RA Board members, Joyce Sable, was elected to serve on the National Board of AROKI, which is the Association of Retirement Organizations in Higher Education. It's always nice to see people get involved at the national level. We did a lot of reconfiguring of our website and throughout the year contemplated how to increase our value as an organization serving UNM retirees. And finally, we're trying to figure out, as is the rest of the world, how we need to change our approach and outreach during this pandemic as we represent a pretty vulnerable population, at least by age. So that's a little bit of a wrap-up of the year so far. And thank you again for the support of the UNM Retiree Association. I certainly enjoyed the time I've spent working with you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary, and I am one of you, so I particularly thank you. If there's no other items, I don't see, I didn't see the advisor come as tuckware on page top of three. I think it's now appropriate for adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Maren.
Maren, okay, second.
Second by Sandra.
Sandra, thank you. I'll take those votes in affirmative. Regent Doty?
Yes, move to adjourn.
Regent Schwartz?
I vote yes.
Regent Henry?
Yes.
Regent Sanchez Real?
Yes.
And I vote yes, and I again thank everybody. I really do appreciate a very substantive meeting. Thank you, and we'll see you, I'm sure, in June. Take care.